This is the school board briefing meeting for Tuesday, May 6, 2014. Let's see, first up is Mr. Martin with Board Expansion Referendum Language.
Ms. Morgan, Board Members, I think you're probably all aware at this point that House Bill 7031 passed which amended Section 1001.34 of Florida statutes addressing membership of District School Board and authorizes not only the Lee County School Board but any school board in the state of Florida to adopt a resolution to place a referendum before voters to make a decision with respect to expansion of the school board membership to increase the number of school board members. With that authority now clearly in place, the Board can move forward with placing that on the ballot in November. The bill does make it clear that the resolution has to specify how those different offices will be elected. And that's what we need to talk about today. I need to obtain your direction on how that issue is presented before the voters for their decision. So I've got just a few slides to show to you today, a part of the PowerPoint that we discussed the last time. And the first slide we'll take a look at concerns the methodology of elections. And I can provide as much or as little information about this as you need. We discussed it before, so I don't want to go back over it if you recall all the information. But basically, as you see at the bottom of this slide, there are three different options. One is seven districts at large, meaning all seven offices are elected by a countywide vote. The second option is five single member and two at large, meaning the present five offices would be elected single member with only the voters in that member's district selecting that position. And two at large, the two new offices being at large voted on countywide. And the third option is seven single member, where there would be seven districts, each office elected by the voters in that district alone. So if we take a look at the next slide, you'll see that we have a description of each of these options. We need to wait to give Board Members an opportunity to access that.
Got it?
We've got it now.
This is what I get. Oh. That's not right. There's something. Wait a minute. Click on that.
Okay. That's what I clicked on.
Open it. Oh, yours has something different. Okay.
Get all these little messages which I'm not real happy with. All ready?
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Just go real slow.
Yes, ma'am. The first option again is seven districts at large. With this option, the present five offices would be maintained as at-large voted on countywide, and then the two new offices would also be at-large voted on countywide. In order to implement this option, there would be need to redraw lines to establish seven instead of five districts. By statute, that would have to be done in 15, and has to be done in a non-election year. The redistricting would not affect the residence qualifications of a sitting board member, would not affect that member during their present term, but when they ran again, if they were to do so, they would have to requalify based upon the new residence areas. We do not have the expertise in-house to go through that redistricting process. We've relied on the county staff to do that in the past and really just match the lines established by the County Commission. So if the Board wished to do that, there would be a cost involved. I've worked with county staff, and they estimate that cost to be around $8,000. There's also a cost for advertising when it comes to redistricting, so the cost of that would approach about $10,000. The second option, again, is five single-member districts and two at large. Through that process, the present five offices would be elected as single-member districts only by the voters residing in that district. The two new members, the two new offices would be elected at large, that is by a countywide vote, and they would not be assigned to a district. There would be no residency requirement other than living in Lee County. And if you recall, the last time we talked about the need for those two offices to be staggered, so they would both be elected the first time in '16, one would be elected to a two and the other would be elected to a four-year term because they have to be elected at different times after that initial election. Under that option, there would be no need to redistrict because you would maintain five districts. The third option is seven single-member districts, which of course would require redistricting. You'd have to establish seven districts, and each of the seven offices would be elected by voters solely in that district. So those are the three options. Need your direction so I can prepare that resolution, provided Supervisor of Elections presenting the issue to voters in that format.
Mrs. Dozier?
We have in the past always followed along the lines of the County Commission, which we've been able to use their staff, and you know, that's the way we have set up our districts. And I think that because we don't have the capability and of the cost factor, I would say that the one where we, the most seamless approach would be five members elected solely by the voters, two members at large, because that would be something that you wouldn't, I mean, if it passes, you'd go right into, in 2016, putting the two new members on, because that was going to be my question, how would the two new be elected? And you just said one would be elected for two years, one would be elected for four years.
In 2016.
Right, in '16. And both of them would be put back on. And that would also not interfere with the cycle of current elections, correct? Everybody would continue to just be on the same cycle-
Yes.
-that they're on now, correct?
That's correct, because you'd have two offices coming up in '16, and with the balance, two more would still put you one more than half, so you're staggered appropriately, yes.
Okay. And again, because of the fact that I have not heard any conversations in the County Commission, in fact, I can't remember when that, there's a committee that reconvenes every 25 years, and I can't remember the name of the committee, but the Commission reconvenes it to look at the Charter and make recommendations to them. And I did have the opportunity to talk to a couple of the Commissioners, and it's my understanding that they are not going to have this discussion until that committee reconvenes. So when that committee reconvenes, and let's say that they change and go to seven, they want to go to a seven-member Commission seat, and they want to redraw the lines, at that time, would there be anything in statute that would prohibit us from changing if we go with five single and two at large at this time?
No, except that you would have to go back to the voters again.
Okay, all right, okay. And they would be going back to the voters, too.
They would.
I mean, they would be going to the voters, too.
That's true.
And to me, that seems like it would make more sense because it would be less confusing for the voters. So, right now, that's where I stand.
Okay, yes, and I'll concur with everything that Mrs. Dozier said. It would be the least disruptive for the whole community and the voters, and there's no cost factor, so I think that option two, the five existing districts as single-member districts and two at large would be the best way to go.
Ms. Armstrong?
I agree. I believe that would be the easiest way to go. I still have my drawbacks on doing the seven member, but I understand it would make our jobs a lot easier, everybody's job, so I think that would be the best way to go, five members and then the two at large.
Okay, and I would agree. It's the least disruptive, it has no cost. I think we need to do it simply because this district is too large for five members, and I would like to see a bigger pool of candidates. And I think that going to a single-member district would permit that to happen. So it sounds like you have your direction.
Yes, ma'am. And also, I spoke to Mr. Scott yesterday about this issue. He wanted me to share that his selection would be the five-two option also, so clearly we have consensus, and I'll prepare the resolution in that format. The process from this point is after I prepare that resolution, I'll be sharing it with Ms. Harrington, make sure it's in proper form and enables her to place the issue on the ballot. And to ensure that there's enough time for that review, my plan is to bring this to you at the June 3 meeting.
Okay.
Though there's not a specific requirement in statute, my thinking is that it's probably wise to place this issue as a public hearing, if the Board is comfortable with that, with proper notice.
Anybody uncomfortable with that?
No.
That's fine.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
There is a presentation in that board presentation file. It's number two.
Good afternoon, Dr. Graham and Board Members. My name is Bill Tubbs. I'm with the Financial Services District and-
I'm Mark St. Jagger with Financial Services.
I know you're disappointed not to have Dr. Desamore's smiling face up here, but we're who you get today. We're here to talk to you about a banking services RFP, R147158BC to be exact. The district, after six years with our current provider, did decide that it would be effective for us to look at what was out there, so we did go to an RFP. We recognize that change is always difficult, but any inconvenience should be offset by reducing costs for implementing new services, which we hope to do. We did go out to the public, out to the banking public, and requested proposals for commercial banking services, which are our current banking relationships, what you'd expect, our checking account, our payroll account, internal funds, that kind of thing. Our P-card program, which we currently have in existence, it's members of the district take a credit card and use it for making small purchases, so they don't have to go through the requisition, purchase order, cutting accounts payable checks, so it makes it more efficient for small purchases, and we currently have a program for that. E-payables, which is a way of doing the accounts payable but using a credit card rather than writing a check, and that hopefully would generate some revenues to us from doing that, which is why we'd be looking at it. Merchant Services, which is taking credit cards for payments at schools, at departments, food services, that kind of thing. That's not currently a large portion of what we do. We do have it available. We have some schools taking credit cards at this point in time, but it's not heavily used, and we don't anticipate it becoming very heavily used. And the RFP does allow the district to award all, some, or none of the above services to the recommended vendor.
So you might be wondering who we reached out to to find out who would give us proposals. The district's procurement department reached out to 15 registered vendors with the FDIC that are permitted to do business within Lee County. From those 15 vendors, we received six RFP proposals. The committee, the selection committee, reviewed those six proposals, and we shortlisted three top vendors. From that selection process, the committee decided to go ahead and allow those three top vendors to come back one additional time to the committee to present their answers to a couple of the questions that the committee had regarding their services and their proposal, and also to give the committee a best and final offer, and give them the opportunity to do that. Through that process, our top-ranked vendor was selected through a vote process, and the evaluation criteria is listed there for you as to how the committee came up with a top-ranked vendor. We used program features, which are the items that Mr. Tubbs just spoke to about the commercial services and so forth. Support services, implementation, and references were another category. Banking locations were obviously a large category of concern, and our fee schedule. And just so you know, in order to compare each one of the banking services so that we would have an apples-to-apples comparison, the committee asked each one of the providers to go through our current items that we currently pay for with our vendor that we currently do business with, and asked them to go ahead and give us their list of fees for those exact services. So that way, we knew we were comparing exactly the same service among these three competitors, because if we would have left it up to them, they would have just bundled or packaged services together, and we really wouldn't have known exactly how much each individual service that the district requires was going to cost us. So on the next slide, we had a breakdown of potential savings to the district, and when you look at the number, it does look astronomical, and it is quite large, which is why we wanted to bring this forward to you. The potential savings that we had calculated, that $590,000-plus figure came from calculating a five-year contract. If we stayed with our current provider and did absolutely nothing different, that cost to us is currently a little over $100,000 a year. So multiply that by five, along with the income, the potential income, that our winning provider, or our winning RFP provider is willing to offer us with the package that they put together, that was another little over $16,000 a year in potential income. So when you bundle all that together, that comes up with our $590,000 figure. So then we tried to relate that to, what does that mean to the district? And looking at an average teacher's salary, it could possibly potentially allow two additional teachers to be hired with the savings that we're hoping to accumulate through switching our services. And impacting 44 children's lives yearly between those two teachers. So we just wanted to kind of relate that into practical terms and what it could mean in savings to the district. As you can see, we currently don't receive a rebate for our current P-card program due to not having a sufficient volume. The change that's proposed with our new awarded vendor, should that be voted upon and approved, will allow us to gain rebate on every single P-card purchase that we make at a rate of 1.7%, which was slightly above the other two, top three that we had selected. So we're looking at a potential income over that five-year contract of $200,000, and that's not increasing our current P-card volume. If we did that, it could be even more than that. We currently spend about $2.5 million a year on our P-card program. When we get the opportunity to implement the E-payable program that we're looking at potentially doing, we anticipate another almost $1.2 million throughout the five-year contract in rebates. Again, that will be calculated at a 1.7%, which was better than the other two top-ranked vendors.
Just so you know, the $590,000 number that we presented to you is extremely conservative. We went with using $30 million left in the account to generate the ECR. We treated all three vendors exactly the same. We said $30 million stay in the account. It would generate the ECR, and then any excess money would go into their investment account, which is 10 basis points, and we used that 10 basis points. Currently, with our current investment advisors, we have started doing investments, and we're getting about 69 basis points. So in this calculation, with the winning vendor, we would need less money left in that account. We would be able to then invest more money and generate even greater savings than what this is, but we presented it to you as conservatively as possible. Okay, the transition plan. The current vendor has agreed to extend our current contract for 90 days. That will buy us time to do the transition that we need to do. All of the proposers to the RFP were required to provide detailed transition plans as well as timelines for the transition. The transition plans put most of the burden of the transition work on the bank rather than the district, although the district will still have sufficient work, not sufficient, quite a bit of work to do. And we do plan on bringing both the 90-day contract extension with the current provider as well as a recommendation for award to the Board at its May 20, 2014, meeting.
So of course, the next question would be, who would be affected in the district by proposing this particular change of banking institution? First and foremost, obviously, our bookkeepers at our individual school locations. This is going to dictate a different location for them to go to with their daily deposits, a different account that will need to be set up for the checks that they issue through their internal funds. Will also affect our food services managers. Each one of them go daily to make deposits, so we will have to reroute the locations that they go to, provide them additional banking materials, deposit slips and so forth to allow them to deposit into the new accounts. It will obviously affect the Financial Services Department with the deposits that we make daily and the funds that we take in on behalf of the district. It will definitely affect our payroll department in the processing of paychecks and our direct deposit files. Programming will have to be redone through our PeopleSoft system to allow all of this to transpire. And lastly, the employees, any of our employees that are still cashing checks that aren't on direct deposit, that service is being offered through the new provider, so there will be a change in venue as far as going to a different bank to have your payroll or your expense reimbursement check cashed, as well as the proximity to the branches.
The next steps. This presentation says conclude negotiations with the primary candidate. Since this presentation was prepared, negotiations have been completed. Am I okay telling who? And the winning proposer was SunTrust Bank, as opposed to Bank of America, who is our current provider. And I guess Wells Fargo was the other one of the top three. So we did a comparison of Wells Fargo, SunTrust, and Bank of America as to where we would be going. Now we'll be prepared to bring this recommendation to the Board at its May 20 meeting, and if the Board should choose to accept that and award it, then we will begin the transition period right after that. Questions?
Board Members, any questions? Mr. Armstrong, no. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, so if I'm understanding you correctly, we're going to, making the change, we would save 2 million, approximately $2 million over, save or earn approximately $2 million over the five years. And then you mentioned some costs, some changes for different departments in the district, and would there be a cost attached to those changes?
The changes that would be made would be voluntarily, to some extent. Internal funds for schools, they are not required to come with us. If we changed to SunTrust and they're happy with Bank of America, they'd be welcome to keep their accounts at Bank of America. We do currently pay all the fees as a lump internally. If they should choose to remain with their current provider, then they would become responsible for any fees that they might have. One of the things that we did for the proximity, we made, we gave every proposer a list of every school we had and what their address was. We made them take a list of all of their branches in the county and list the mileage from each one of our schools to the nearest branch. And we didn't find a huge difference. Some were shorter, some were a little longer. I think the average was about four miles, which is almost what it is now. We currently have, Bob, 10 schools that don't bank, we currently have 10 schools that don't bank with Bank of America now, Sanibel Schools, some others like that. And they wouldn't be affected because they would stay where they are. I think nearly all of those have a business partnership relationship, and those banks do not charge them a fee anyway, so they probably would not be impacted at all. Food services, they'd be going to a different branch, but still, the mileage we expect to be about the same, so it shouldn't impact them too much. And the $2 million savings is contingent on us getting on E-payables and getting enough people signed up and spending enough to generate that, so that is a bit of an estimate.
Okay.
It would be contingent on us to try to make that happen.
Right, okay. So that was going to be the next part of my question. Thank you for answering that. Thank you. Mrs. Dozier?
Back on slide number three, where it says Merchant Services, Schools, Departments Accepting Credit Card Payment for Goods and Services, blah, blah, blah. First of all, I know when you use credit cards, you have to have like those little machines and authorization. Does that mean that every school is going to be equipped with that?
Only if they request it. We currently have started doing that, and there is a rental for those, and the schools are bearing that. Are the schools bearing that expense, or are we bearing it?
The school.
The school is bearing that right now, and if they should want to participate in that, then there would be the same type thing. They would get a machine, and they would bear that expense.
Okay, because, I mean, I see, for instance, school stores, tickets for athletic events. I mean, I can see this for not only athletic events, but say, plays and stuff like that, and you would really probably need those machines around everywhere, so, and I would also assume that the cost is per machine for rental, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But you did say that it's optional. If the schools want to do this, they can do it, but they don't have to. It's not going to be something that you're, that we're going to say, you've got to do this.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. All right. And Bank of America didn't come out on top?
Did not.
Well, SunTrust is my bank.
I would like to tell you that we had a group of six or seven employees, I won't necessarily go into those, but included internal audit, financial services, information systems. We also had Mr. David Hall, who is the Chief Operating Officer for Sanibel Community Bank, sitting on that committee, and he gave us an awful lot of insight as to what, how a banker looks at things to see that we asked the right questions. We also had Mr. David Jiang and Mr. Mel Hamilton with Davidson Investments, who is our current investment advisor, who was with us the whole way, and they were invaluable. They did a lot of the data crunching, a lot of the analysis, presented stuff to us in ways that we could understand it, and again, made sure that we asked the right questions.
Mr. Armstrong?
How would this affect our P-cards? Would that inhibit some people from using them for the time being?
No, sir. We're looking at first implementing only the commercial banking, so we would not change the P-cards at all. In fact, we wouldn't have to change the P-cards ever. The procurement is also looking at a program where we would piggyback with a consortium, and we could generate savings of almost as what we showed here, staying with the current P-card program. So there's nothing set in stone that we would have to go with that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Bonnie McFarland. And again, there's a presentation. Okay, let's see. Got to find it, though. Number three. Go back. Everybody ready? Ready? Okay, we're ready. Welcome.
Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. Good afternoon, my name is Bonnie McFarland. I'm the Director of Compensation, Benefits, and Insurance, and I have with me today Heather Parker, who's our new Wellness Coordinator. She's been with us since the end of February, and we have collaborated in creating today's presentation, so I will move right forward in that. Actively is the district's wellness program, has been around since approximately 2007, and we do list our mission here. Essentially, we are looking to support employees in their healthy lifestyles, which creates more productive employees, which translates into better results in the classroom. That's kind of a shortened version. You've got the whole mission listed out there. The program has grown quite extensively since 2007, and this slide kind of gives you an overview of the programs that are currently being offered. We have a number of nutrition programs, fitness programs, send out educational newsletters that contain healthy recipes. We do work with local community partners to offer discounts to employees, to health-related organizations- We have a number of nutrition programs, fitness programs, send out educational newsletters that contain healthy recipes. We do work with local community partners to offer discounts to employees, to health-related organizations. And as you can see on the slide, there's two new programs, CHIP and BACWA, that we're hoping to introduce this coming school year.
What are they?
CHIP is actually, we're going to go into it a little bit more, but it's the Complete Health Improvement Program. That program is basically looking at all aspects of health, so you're looking at nutrition, you're looking at movement, you're looking at lifestyle, and it's a relatively intensive program that employees would have to request to be in, and we would select employees that met the criteria of that program. It's a national program that we're hoping to be able to implement here. And BACWA is an exercise program, probably most similar to Zumba. It's a different type of exercise movement type program. We'd love to have you out for a class if we get it started. In 2007, we did start the current program, and we have received $100,000 a year from Blue Cross to run the wellness program. That works out to about 83 cents per employee per month, so the program has been run on a very tight budget for a number of years. In the 2012-13 school year, a grant was received by the Actively program, and that prevented us to offer movie tickets to employees who completed the health risk appraisals, the HRAs. HRA participation had been pretty low, and the offer of the incentive did manage to increase the participation over 100 percent, so we had a very good reception to the incentive that was offered. The success of that incentive in the 13-14 school year led us to go to the ITF and ultimately to the board with a request to use money out of the Insurance Task Force Reserve for an incentive program. And the, last year's request was a total of 1.2 million, 1 million or up to, excuse me, up to 1.2 million. 1 million of that would have been to provide an incentive. That incentive was $100 per employee per year towards programming. And then the other 200,000 was to increase the programming offerings. We were pretty much offering all the classes we could with the budget that we had, and in order to increase that offering so that more people could participate, we needed some additional funding for that. And that was approved by the ITF, recommended by the ITF and approved by the board, and that has been incredibly successful. We had a 70 percent increase from the 12-13 school year with participations into the health risk appraisals, which means we currently have over 20 percent of our employees participating in those health risk appraisals. In addition to that, we have been able to increase the offering of programming, increase the number of different sites that receive programming, and also implement our Wellness Academy program with our different schools. So, we've had some great buy-in from some of our schools to host these sites and also to promote wellness at their sites. We've had a preliminary report from our Blue Cross Blue Shield Partners. They have a program called Better You From Blue that we partner with on the wellness side, and we look at a number of indicators. That report is not quite finalized, it will be in the next few weeks, but all of the indicators that we have are either neutral or moving in a positive direction. So, that means that we are impacting our employees' wellness. We're moving in a positive direction in terms of wellness. And what we would like to do, which is our proposal for you today, is to continue with that success. We are proposing 1.75 million from the Self-Inured Medical Reserve Fund, with 1.5 million of that for incentives, and 250,000 to maintain that increased programming, with the additional 50,000 on that budget for the CHIPS program, which we talked about a moment ago. And I got a little ahead of myself. There's the slide for that. And again, the programs are both nutritional-based programs, stress reduction programs, and physical activity programs and challenges. To give you an idea of where we're intending to spend the money, on the left-hand side, you see the incentive program as it was laid out last year. There was $100 max per person on that program. Employees received $25 simply for completing the health risk appraisal. We feel that's a really important part of the wellness program, because you can't manage what you don't know. If people don't know that they have high blood pressure, if they don't know they have elevated sugars, then there's no management available to something you don't know. And then there were some various amounts available for people who met certain health targets, and then employees could earn money for attending certain educational classes that were pointed towards nutrition and lifestyle management. The 14-15 program, we're requesting $150 per employee for the year for the max, and we're wanting to increase the health risk appraisal amount to $50 for completion of that for employees. Not only does that give vital information to the employees about their own individual health, but it gives us as a district vital information about their health as well, because it gives us a snapshot. We get no specific data from this report, but we get great aggregate data about where our risk factors are within the district, and that allows us to plan programming that targets those risk factors. So, that really is a vital piece. Last year's program, we offered some incentive for people who were borderline on some of their biometrics. It was the first year of the program, and we wanted to encourage people to come out and learn about their health, but ultimately, we feel like we want to eliminate the borderline, but provide a higher incentive for those who actually meet the targets. And then, some of the classes that we're looking at introducing, such as the CHIPS program, are a little more involved than some of the classes we had offered last year, so we wanted to increase the available money for those classes, because they are a bigger commitment on part of the employee. This proposal was presented to the Insurance Task Force in their April 2014 meeting, and it was unanimously recommended that I bring it to you for consideration. So, we will be bringing this to the Board Action Meeting on May 20. Are there any questions I can answer for you at this time?
Mrs. Fisher?
Okay. I just have two quick questions. What's the total amount right now in the self-insured reserves?
As of the last valuation, it was 39 million.
Okay.
Done last summer. We'll be doing another one here in a few months.
Okay. And is there an estimate on the return of investment for the incentives?
Specifically for the incentives, we don't have an ROI for that, but there are, there's a lot of data on ROI for a wellness program as a whole. And the incentives are kind of to get folks engaged in that program. ROI varies depending on the particular study that you're looking at. Some of the programs, like the CHIPS program, the return on investment is in the six-to-one range. Most health wellness programs, it's in the two-to-one or three-to-one range.
Could you just expand a little bit more on that CHIPS program?
I'm going to let Heather do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hello. Okay. The CHIPS program, we ran at Lee Memorial Health Systems, and we are very successful with it. It's a program that is a long commitment. It's 18 sessions. I made it on nights that board members would be able to attend, so Mondays and Thursdays. The program consists of eating more plant-based foods. It encourages moving more and drinking more water. It also has a psychological compound to it, where you work on why you do certain things that you do, so behavior modification. At Lee Memorial, we did three programs already, and they're on their fourth program as we speak. It's been very successful, as I said. The first program that we ran there, the ROI was three-to-one. We invested 30,000, and we got a return of 90,000. And we're expecting that return of 90,000 every consecutive year. So, because we're not, it's the only program out there besides Pritikin, which is an inpatient resident facility that is actually documented for disease reversal. So, we're not managing diabetes anymore. We're in the reversal stage. So, it's very exciting.
This is very exciting. Thank you for that.
Mr. Armstrong, no. Mrs. Dozier? I just can't wait to sign up for those classes.
Have you?
Well, I have no questions. I'll just make a comment. I see all the walkers in the halls, which is great, and I hear a lot of talk about wellness just in our office, so I know you guys are having an impact. I think it's great.
And one other thing is, we're hopefully getting you guys some nice, fresh, clean, lovely water for in that room in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
The whole building, but yes, we'll get one for you guys.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Yes, it is. I know. And you're stuck with me. Okay.
I'm back regarding the property and casualty insurance renewal for the school district.
It's number four on the presentation.
Yep. I'll get there. This is part of my job that nobody knows anything about. It's just one of those things that we do in the background, and most of the time, unless we have a hurricane or something like that, most of what goes on, we just deal with and move forward. But it is quite a complex program that we offer, and it's what I call district insurance. So, we have employee insurance, which is like the medical dental vision, those things that people are familiar with, and then this is the district insurance, so it's property, liability, workers' comp, and that side of the house. Our current portfolio of insurance includes 12 property policies, 160 flood policies, 10 liability policies, and our current year premium is $7,417,946. The renewal, I actually have good news for you guys on this, is less than the expiring, so that's exciting. And it includes some additional protection for the district. So, essentially, we're renewing everything that we currently have and proposing that we add cyber liability. It's been all over the news. I don't have to probably go into much of that, but there's a lot of reporting requirements in the event that you do suffer a cyber breach, and this insurance would provide both money to do those reporting requirements and would also provide us access to experts to help us make sure we have checked off all the boxes in the event that we had a cyber breach. And also increases our property limits, purchases us some more insurance on the property side than we currently have. As I mentioned before, it is below budget. The total premium is, for this renewal proposal, would be $7,305,253. That is below the current budget, as well as 100, almost over $100,000 below the current premium. And all of our policies do contain a self-insurance component, which is similar to a deductible. It's called a self-insured retention, and that's, those are the claims that we just pay for in-house, and we don't submit through the insurance. To tell you a little bit about our property insurance, the district does have approximately $2.16 billion of what's called total insured value. That's the building and all of our stuff, buildings and all of the stuff that is in it, the insured value of those. We do work with a broker who markets this insurance for us every year, so that we're making sure we're getting the best available insurance at the best price. We did receive quotes from over 30 different companies, and our property insurance is a layered program, and there are currently 13 participating insurance companies in that layered program. And of the premium I quoted to you earlier, approximately 80 percent of that is to provide property insurance. The district owns a lot of property. Over the past several years, we had a kind of a perfect storm of difficult budgets to deal with, as well as a new property modeling system in the insurance world that increased the amount that we had to pay for the insurance that we bought. As a result of that, we did lower the limits on some of our insurance to try to balance out those increases in premiums to just mitigate that rising cost. And we did receive what's called a notice of credible coverage from the Office of Insurance Regulation. That's really important if we ever need to go get disaster funds, because basically what that says is that we've bought an appropriate amount of insurance based on our size and that FEMA and those sorts of folks should come in and help us out, because we did our due diligence to cover ourselves as a district. But in the last OIR, the office did recommend increasing our wind limit, so in the event we had a hurricane, we would have better coverage on that. With this renewal, we have increased those wind limits by $25 million, so we feel that that move will satisfy the Office of Insurance Regulation for this next year, and we will be receiving that same letter of credible coverage. The premium for the property insurance, as it stands by itself, is $5,963,838. Another piece of insurance that we purchased for the district is the National Flood Insurance Program. Approximately 25 percent of the buildings that the district owns are located in special hazard flood zones, and those policies have to be purchased from the federal government. It's the National Insurance Flood Program created by the federal government for folks like us. So, there's no market for this. It's not like you can go out and get a quote from this company and a quote from that company. The government says, here's your bill, and we have to write the check. We do purchase 160 of those policies, and as I said, the rates are standardized by FEMA. With the Biggar Waters Act of 2012, there was approximately a 20 percent increase in these, with things like Superstorm Sandy and things like that. The national reserves to provide for relief during natural disasters has been pretty much expended, and so they're raising the rates to help refill those coffers. So, the premium for the flood insurance that's purchased is $534,860. The rest of these are essentially liability policies, and so I've just presented to them in a spreadsheet. We did have a couple of great winds on this, specifically the general and auto liability policy. We were able to reduce that premium by over $50,000. The workers' comp fund, we were also able to reduce that premium, this is the excess coverage again, not the first dollar, by $67,000. And we're able to reduce on the liability side, the total reduction of about $95,000. So, in summary, we're purchasing more insurance with the increased property limits and the addition of the cyber liability, and where we did see an increase on that flood premium, again, nothing we could do about that, but we did see premium savings on the property and the liability side, which is where we have the market where we can go shop those insurances. And we're looking, again, at a premium total of $7,305,253 for this next planned year. The requested approval for this will be brought to the Board Action Meeting on May 20th, oops, of 2014. I do apologize for the typo. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? No? This time? No? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I do have a question. You said that 30 vendors, I think, submitted bids. Did Fizbit present a bid?
They did not. Actually, I have spoken with Fizbit regarding the current insurance pool that they have, and they generally insure smaller counties, and I was actually advised by their current, I believe he's their current broker, that we would not be a good fit for their current pool, because it is smaller counties. We would essentially be the same size as the pool. But there's some discussion about doing a larger county pool, and I informed him that we would, of course, be interested in looking and seeing what was available.
Thank you very much. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. And now, student scheduling system replacement initiative. Oh, there we are. Hello?
Hello. Good afternoon, board chair and board members. I'm Dolores Shellhorse, the Director of Information Systems, and with me is Susan Joyner, who is the Coordinator of School Development.
Let me, number five is the presentation. Sorry, Dolores.
Thank you for the opportunity to brief you today on an upcoming request to purchase software, new software, that will be used to replace district current software used by schools to schedule students. And today, we will be briefing you on the background of the initiative, sharing with you the timeline, the strategy that we used, the process that we employed, giving you some information on the recommended vendor, and then wrapping it up with the next steps. The reason that we're here today is because our current student scheduling software vendor decided to drop support on the product that we currently use. We purchased the Silk Student Scheduling Product back in December of 2014 from a company named Exlogica, and since then, the company has changed hands three different times. Excelsior was the company who bought Exlogica and therefore the Silk Scheduling Product with it. Then Global Scholar purchased Excelsior, and they renamed Silk Product Pinnacle SIS. And then Scantron purchased Global Scholar, and they decided to drop support because student scheduling did not align with the strategic direction of their company. As a result of that, we have a student scheduling product that we need to replace, and aside from the obvious reasons about why student scheduling is important, there are some other factors related to student scheduling we thought we'd share with you. Student scheduling drives FTE funding. It forms the basis of the value-added model of Race to the Top process. That information is derived from the student schedules. It also It also drives the DOE class size calculations. So, the product is a very critical product to our district. The timeline for scheduling usually begins at the beginning of a calendar year when schools are scheduling students for the next school year. So, right now, we are using Pinnacle SIS to schedule our students for the 14, 15 school year. What we're simultaneously doing is implementing this initiative so that we have a product in place by January of 2015 for the 15, 16 school year scheduling. It is an aggressive timeline that we're looking at for evaluation and implementation purposes. Just some of the implementation steps that need to take place are readying the infrastructure, configuring the software, converting data, addressing integration points, how it interacts with other software products that we have, as well as other data. We need to implement customizations, test it in multiple environments, train both trainers and then the district staff and the use of the product, and then deploy it. And we need to accomplish all of this by January 2015. So, knowing that we had time constraints, we opted under DOE Rule 6A-1.012 to enter into direct negotiations for the acquisition of information technology as defined in Florida statute, 282.0041. We researched student information software products that we used in the state of Florida toward the goal of identifying a vendor that had a student scheduling product that had a proven track record with Florida State reporting functionality. Again, Florida reporting drives our FTE funding, as well as the VAM process, et cetera. So, having a product with this functionality is very critical. We also wanted to make sure that we had a vendor that had a product in districts of our comparable size. Another factor with software is the larger the student population, the higher the risk of performance issues. So, we wanted to ensure that districts of our size were using the product. Also, Ashley County staff, they typically take software products and push it to the limit based in terms of functionality and what they would like it to do. So, having it in large districts would help us as well. We were looking for a product that was compatible with the district's technical environment, as well as looking to the future, making sure it was expandable to include a full student information system. And even though we opted for the direct negotiation route, we did follow a structured evaluation process. The first step in our process was to form an evaluation committee, which consisted of both technical staff as well as the functional staff. And the functional staff, it's mostly school-based members. And Susan Joyner, as the coordinator of this initiative, wanted to ensure that as part of this evaluation committee, we had members representing the various school levels, as well as members representing the various roles, student scheduling roles. And in looking at this, it's difficult to see because it's so small, but we have elementary, middle, high representation, K-8, et cetera. We have principals on the committee, assistant principals, school counselors, information specialists, and departments who also use scheduling, like the virtual school, charter schools, et cetera. And so, there are 35 school-based members on the committee in addition to technical team members. And we do have some committee members in the audience today, and I would like to ask them to stand, to be recognized for the work that they've done on the committee thus far.
Do you want to have them introduce themselves?
Sure. Nope. I think they're bashful.
Oh, come on. Introduce yourselves to us. We won't mic, we just growl.
They've worked hard on the committee and they have a lot of work still to do during implementation of a new product and then also in supporting it. And we also would like to recognize the administrators for their commitment of staff time to this project. And so, we're fortunate in the district to have such a great team always working together toward a common goal. So, it really helps. As part of the process, we established a document repository where we can share all of the information with the evaluation committee members at any time they have access to it. Also, with the committee input, put together the functional and technical requirements for the system. And with committee participation, created scripted demonstrations using those functional requirements. So, we looked at the functional requirements. We decided, okay, based on our functional requirements, let's form some scripted demos and then invite a vendor and to demonstrate to our scripted demo. And we invited a vendor for two full days of demonstration. We extended the invitation beyond the evaluation committee to anyone in the district who wanted to participate. We also noticed the evaluation dates on the procurement website, created an evaluation rubric, and then created surveys for feedback. The vendor also provided access to their products so that the committee members could take it for a test drive. They still have access to that product and have had it for a couple of months now. And then, based on the feedback of the committee, we brought the vendor back for two additional days of demonstration to address follow-up questions that they had, clarification, any new points that they wanted to see, maybe a repeat of some of the items that were done initially and now they wanted a second drive of it, et cetera. And then, we made a site visit to Pinellas County School District. We had an opportunity to meet with high school staff in the morning. We met at a high school. And we met with the staff who was involved in scheduling on a regular basis. So, we had an opportunity to speak to them and get their perspective. Then, in the afternoon, we went to the district office, had an opportunity to speak to the technical staff, as well as had an opportunity to visit an open lab at the district office of staff that were doing their schedules for the 14, 15 school year using the product. The committee unanimously voted or recommended that we proceed with direct contract negotiations with the vendor. The recommended vendor is Focus School Software. They're located in St. Petersburg, Florida. They've had software products in school districts since 2006. I've shared with you their website if you care to look further into their background and history. You'll notice that they are presently in 21 school districts in Florida that are using their full SIS system. They're mostly small districts, but you'll notice that the one large district here is Pinellas County with over 100,000 students, and they've been using the product since 2010. The vendor also has three planned implementations for August of 2014 with three more school districts in Florida. And then, Orange County, district of, in excess of 185,000 students, recently contracted with the vendor in January of 2014. And they are doing the full student information system. They plan to do it over multi-years with their go-live in spring 2016. Duval County, with a student population of 125,000-plus students, is also in contract negotiations with them as we speak. Our next steps, we're fine-tuning the project plan as we look toward the implementation to be ready for January 2015. We're finalizing the training plan, a very important aspect of any implementation moving forward. So, we're building a lot of service hours in there for training. We're finalizing the contract language and finalizing the cost. And again, we're still in the process of discussing costs, but to give you a sense of what the cost might be, we're looking in the neighborhood of $500,000. That includes licensing, three years of support, maintenance support, implementation services, training services, and then onsite services for two weeks just before a school opens and while school is in session. And then, we would like to bring it to the Board Action Meeting on June 3rd. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, I just have one question. How does that $500,000 compare to what we're currently paying, the current vendor?
Well, we're currently paying maintenance costs, which is annual maintenance. But I will take you back to when we purchased Silk in 2004, December 2004, and we paid approximately $500,000 in 2004.
Mrs. Dozier?
So, the fact that we are only going to pay approximately $500,000, we are basically maintaining costs, but we're getting the same benefits, correct?
Well, with any software implementation, initially, you have a larger outlay because you pay your licensing fees and the implementation fees. And then, once you're beyond that point each year thereafter, you pay your annual maintenance fee, which is a much lower cost. So, there's a cost to move to a new system. When we moved to Silk in 2004, the cost is comparable to the cost we're moving to now. The maintenance fees that we've paid each year with Silk going forward are comparable to the cost that we'll pay annually with each year as we go forward.
So, basically, it's wash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Except for the initial outlay that, as we put a new system in.
Mr. Armstrong?
So, there's no change in functionality, or did I miss that? No enhancement of functionality?
I believe that the functionality will be basically, almost everything, I'm saying, I will say, it appears to be everything that they had before, plus, it appears to be not only satisfy what they need, but also add additional things to it. Now, I will share with you that as the committee evaluated the product, they did notice some things that they would like differently. And during negotiations, we discussed that with the vendor. And everything that the committee recommended, the vendor has agreed to put in the core product. So, even though we're asking for it as a customization, which has a cost associated with it from a maintenance standpoint as you move forward, if it's outside of the core product, they've agreed to put it into the core product because they thought it was a great idea. So...
Go ahead.
Any of the districts, or you visited Pinellas, I assume you talked to some of the other districts. Did they do any customizing? Because customizing tends to be when things break down.
Some of the other districts have done customizing outside of the scope of the product. But again, the two larger districts we spoke with, Pinellas and Manatee, shared with us that the vendor is very amenable to incorporating any modifications that are recommended into the core product so that it benefits all Florida districts. They're very committed to Florida districts. They're very committed to Florida State reporting functionality. They monitor the Florida Department of Ed website for the changes for survey reporting, FTE reporting, et cetera. And as a result of that, they also initiate what we might call customizations based on what they see as Florida district needs.
I wanted to say two things. One, of the biggest challenges, for whatever reason, Florida's reporting system is very different. And when we went through what we went through in early 2000s, that was part of the struggle because none of the standard offerings that were out there at that time could handle the Florida reporting. So, that was a huge piece. The other thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the advantages, and Dolores mentioned it, and it will be coming back to you when we get closer to it, we have to replace our mainframe. And unlike sometimes in the past, we've gotten this system to do this function and this system to do this function, part of the attraction of this, we will be able to just, the other areas that we're going to need to improve and modernize, we'll be able to be attached to this. It'll be one system rather than having to piecemeal it as we have in the past. So, that was part of this study as well. So, we are, as we said, if we're going to make this investment, we're going to need it to be able to do more than just scheduling. And they have those other products.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Shellhouse and Ms. Joyner. Code of Conduct. I'll have to get, pull this up.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Madam Superintendent, Melissa and I are here to update you on the most recent updates to the Code of Conduct. First slide, Debbie. Okay, had a productive meeting with Jamie, Jamie Michael and Suzanne Rudd with regards to some concerns in the code. So, if you'll turn to the first slide.
This is number six, if you aren't there yet.
I'm sorry.
Got it.
Good to go?
Yep, we're good to go.
Okay, so if you looked at the last sentence, under bus transportation, like I mentioned earlier, I met with the Spock leadership, Jamie and Suzanne. They had some concerns about transportation. We had some productive discussion. I would say it was an excellent meeting. And evidently, they wanted this, or they've had some issues on the buses with regards to students dialing 911 while they're on the buses. So, we included this language. Students who make false reports while riding a school bus will face discipline. So, that's included now in the Code of Conduct. Okay. All right. Melissa, next slide.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Dr. Graham. The first edit that I'd like to share with you is under number 25, cheating. Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. We added an electronic device to inappropriate and deliberate distribution or use of an electronic device, information, notes, materials, or work of another person in the completion of an academic exam, test, or assignment in an online or traditional course to include plagiarism.
Thank you.
So, the electronic device will not only include cellphones, but iPads and other types of devices that students may bring to school as a part of the Bring Your Own Device program. The next edit is under number 26. And if you go all the way down to disruptive behavior with a substitute, initially, the first offense, level two, was ISS or after our school. In order to make this progressive, the committee suggests that we remove ISS. And so, the first offense for disruptive behavior with a substitute teacher would be after our school, then moving to one-day ISS. The next edit is under number 33, insubordination and disrespect. Going under the major offenses, it lists first, gross insubordination to a staff member is a level-three administrative review. So, an administrator was removed and a staff member was added. And the last edit that I have to share with you is under number 46, other rule violations. And in the third listing, manipulating computer hardware, software, or data, and/or the misuse of telecommunications services, including but not limited to the improper use of technology devices or posting of inappropriate information on the internet, or accessing inappropriate websites during or after school hours that may interfere with the educational process. In order to align with our BYOD policy, we've taken out school-owned equipment and left that to both school-owned equipment and student-owned equipment.
Okay. Will entertain questions at this time?
Board Members? Mrs. Dozier?
Not really a question, but an observation. I'm glad that you met with Jamie and Susan Rudd because I know this is very important as we change the conduct code each year and we modify it. That's one of the things that we hear that we're not... That's one of the things that we hear, that we're not bringing all the players to the table. And I don't know that we have brought in any teachers to look at the classroom aspect, but I'm going to go ahead and touch on that now. I know that this Code of Conduct has been in play for quite a while, and it might be time, I don't know if y'all have done that, but it might be time, as early as next year, to bring in a sampling of teachers, not administrators, but teachers, to get their input, because I continue to hear some concerns from teachers about the usage and the, just the overall understanding of the discipline code.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah, and I'd like to expand on that by asking, who exactly was on the Code of Conduct committee? And did it include any parents, students, or community members?
Well, we had half of the committee sitting right here. We had principal, assistant principals, our prevention specialist, our coordinator for school counseling. We had Jackie and Mr. Burston were on the committee.
Okay, so then it did not only not include any teachers, but no parents or students or community members?
No, no, ma'am.
You know, that's interesting that you say students, because I think that...
Hello?
You know, when you look at, I know when we were doing teen court and we were putting that in place, and we put it in the hands of the students to actually make the decision on what the outcome was going to be, the punishments for the students, the students are much harder on themselves.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we get students in the room and the students say, "Well, you know, I can't learn if so-and-so and so-and-so is going on, so this needs to happen instead of this." That's certainly something worth looking at, and I would say, in the next school year. You know, that would be another group. And this group of students that is on this committee, we might even form a conduct committee and allow students the opportunity to, you know, write something and, you know, want to be on a committee to work with y'all or something, but I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, we'll look to expand that next year, yes.
So then, for the record, I just want to say again that I continue to be really concerned with the use of internal school suspension and out-of-school suspension as a consequence. And I don't know if the committee has taken the opportunity to research, to look at the research regarding in- and out-of-school suspensions and the impact on academic achievement when kids are out of class. I mean, that's a big concern of mine, and I know you've heard me say it before, and I'll keep saying it until we do something about alternatives to suspension. I had a couple of questions. I was looking through the Code of Conduct again, and I actually had a call from a parent asking about tardies. And I noticed that now we have taken out this, I'm trying to find it on here, but I know that there was a change to what the consequences were. And I'm wondering if we, after the second tardy, why we don't have a social worker referral? Because I know that the majority of our students who may be tardy to school don't drive. And, you know, so I think that we need to be looking at, you know, who the responsibility belongs to. And...
Are you talking tardy to school or tardy to a class?
Well, I'm talking, see, that's, I think we need to be more specific in the Code of Conduct about what the tardy is and who is tardy. Because if it's a high schooler who walks or drives to school, or a secondary student who's late to class, by all means. However, you know, if it's a younger child who depends on an adult to get them there because they can't walk, you know, I think we need to be more specific.
Well, can I address that?
Yeah.
In the code, and there weren't any changes this year, I think you were referring to last year, but this year they were unchanged. But basically, tardy to school and tardy to class are, there's a clear delineation in the Code of Conduct. We know tardy to school, there's a lot of variables involved. There's a traffic accident on 75, inclement weather, a dead battery, a flat tire. You know, we rely on our principals to use their best judgment to excuse the tardy. That's why we have unexcused listed in there, so...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And with regards to several and multiple tardies, we would hope that administration would involve, you know, the school's social workers to find out, hey, what's up? Why are you tardy? You know, what's going on? What's causing it?
Right, right. And I don't know if that should be specified in there, but I think that would be...
The tardy to class, I believe, if you really drill that down, in many, many cases, you have to look to the teacher, because there are some classes that a child would never think to be late, and then there are others. So when a principal begins to look at tardy data, I think they need to be really thoughtful about what they're looking at, because kids know who they can be late to and who they can, and then that's a whole different issue. I would agree that tardy to school with the little guys probably needs a little more research, but I know it's in here. And your issue about using things other than ISS and suspension, I just want to say again, the expectation is that there are interventions before that referral is ever written. This starts with the referral. So if there, and I believe in most cases, in most schools, if there is no, and I know this is the expectation, we'll have to continue to work with leadership if there's an issue, there is an expectation that at least three interventions have taken place before referrals written.
Right.
Unless it's something so egregious, it has to be dealt with differently. But to write a referral at the first time something happens, there have to be those interventions. So you don't see them, there is a list of interventions somewhere in here.
Yes, yes.
But you don't see them with every offense, but they are, I don't know what page they're on, but they're in here.
There's...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, you go first.
There's actually, in the Code of Conduct, there are a list of interventions that are included, and this really gives the administrators an opportunity to look at the specific situation and what intervention might work best. The purpose of any discipline consequence is to change behavior. So this really gives administrators autonomy to be able to look at the situation and the student to see what's going to work best. Also, on the student discipline referral, there is a place where a teacher lists the specific interventions that were taken prior to the referral, and this really helps us as administrators guide a teacher and work with a teacher who may be struggling with those interventions. Also, I know at many schools, teachers have an opportunity to really share best practices on interventions, and there are some that work really, really well. And through our PLC time, we've had an opportunity to spend some time talking about best practices and interventions, so...
Great, that's great. And I think we do have those expectations. I know that we've added the interventions over the last few years, and, you know, and I know I'm hoping for consistency, because, you know, we believe that there's an expectation that this is being done, and the reality is that it's not always so. So I think that, you know, the more we carry the message forward and the more we hold people accountable for doing those interventions and creating an environment where kids are not likely to be late or act out, then, you know, that's the goal. But I would like to see us consider including students' parents on this in the future.
I think that might resolve some of the very issues you're talking about.
I think it might, it really might. And the kids are amazing with what they might come up with, because they know a lot more about what's going on under the covers than we do.
And then the question might be, do you really want the Code of Conduct to be this harsh? That may be what you ask us after the kids get involved.
Right. But I think just giving them ownership is going to make a big difference.
I agree.
And the other thing, I just had one other thing, and that was about the dress code on page, I don't even know what page it is, but student dress code. I noticed there was a change there. Violations of dress code will result in the following, and then on the second offense, loss of eligibility and a participation of extracurricular activities, maximum of five days, and then added one-day ISS if not involved in extracurricular activities. And I think it struck out parent conference on the second offense. And I really would respectfully request that you reconsider striking out the parent conference again, because the first time, a verbal warning and a parent contact, and many times, it never happens again. If it does happen a second time, I think a parent conference, since we're constantly asking for parent involvement, would be critical.
Go ahead.
I'm going to ask this question. Do schools not always call when there's a dress code violation?
Parent contact versus parent conference is what I guess Ms. Fisher is alluding to, if you want...
On the second offense.
Another conference.
Another conference?
Well, I mean, I don't know why we...
Because there's a contact, there's a contact every time a child...
Always make contact, every time there's an offense that contact is made, the conference would come in later under the progressive discipline, but you're calling for it second offense? Bring all the parties in time?
Well, on second offense, it had parent conference, and it looks like it was struck out.
Yeah, that's, well, the committee talked about that, and, you know, trying to get all the players in in a timely manner, the manageability of it.
Yes.
As long as they spoke and documented that they made contact.
Okay, so then is the parent contact implied, or can we specify that?
Well, it must be made.
Okay, so then, one-day ISS if not involved in an extracurricular activity, which, again...
That's the state.
Because dress code violations are so subjective. I mean, I've seen kids go to timeout for showing a knee, yet I've seen girls with their whole decollette exposed and nothing happens, so, and that's a lot more distracting than a knee, in my opinion. Anyway, but I'd like to see us at least put that parent contact back in there.
And just so you're aware, the extracurricular, that's a state rule, that wasn't decided by our district there. And we wanted to remain consistent, because oftentimes, it's students who weren't involved in activity...
Is it state rule?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, statute.
Statute, yeah. We wanted some type of consequence if they weren't involved, so...
Awesome. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Dozier?
Well, you know, Mrs. Fisher continues to bring up the OSS, and I do know that, you know, that is a concern, because if the students aren't in the class, you know, if they're not in school, they're not learning, even though they do get their assignments. You know, something that is not on here anywhere, and it might be a little unorthodox, or a little bit out of the box, but where it says, "I'm looking at disruptive behavior," for instance. When we get down here and we start the ISS or the OSS, we might want to just have a conversation around having the parent come to school and follow the student around during the day.
That's been done before, and I can tell you what, that straightens the kids out right away.
Oh, it does.
They don't want their parents in school.
I know they don't. And that might be, that might be an option that we put here. That might do something drastically to eliminate a lot of kids that would normally act out.
Is that on the intervention list?
I don't think it's on there, no. You know, and as a principal, I used to use that a lot. I said, you know, you straighten up, or your mom's coming in. Some of the concerns now are surrounding, you know, bringing an adult without being cleared and checked out, you know, around other kids, but, you know, anything we can use to get the kids to act appropriately would help.
Well, and the first and foremost thing, in my opinion, is always the role modeling.
Yes, ma'am.
And sadly, it doesn't always happen at home.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Armstrong? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There it is. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so this is my annual visit to you to share information with you about our priority criteria that we have for our young children. I thought that, first off, I'm not sure why it's not up there, because I'm seeing it on my screen. There it is, okay. I just wanted to share a little bit of information with you that this past year, you can see that our funded enrollment for Head Start, and early Head Start is our birth-to-three-year-old group. We serve over the number that we're funded for in Head Start, and part of that is because we get state voluntary pre-kindergarten dollars. So we have 881 that were actually served, which is over our funded enrollment. But as you can see, we had 580 on the waitlist in Head Start. We have a smaller waitlist for early Head Start typically, because we really don't recruit for that program, because it is a very small program, and we serve our teen parents primarily, so there's not a lot of room for the community. So we don't actively recruit for that. If you look at this slide, this shows you that already, our capacity for this upcoming year is 918 in Head Start, and we already have 1,336 applications. And that is as of this date. And of course, we get a lot over the summer. So that is the reason why we need this priority criteria set up. We have kids on the waitlist. Everyone has to be, meet the eligibility requirements, and so primarily, we look at the three- and four-year-olds, because the others just need to be pregnant women or birth-to-three. But they do, but to get into the Head Start program, they have to be three or four on or before September 1st, and they meet income guidelines. So those children on the waiting list are all eligible for the program. We have a limited number of slots. We have to decide who is going to get in. And so we have a board policy that reflects points that are given to children who meet certain criteria. We've made just a few changes this year to the criteria. One is the completion of the early Head Start program or to be a transitioning three-year-old. Kids will now begin to transition on their third birthday. There's a big push for that. It's the same thing that happens in exceptional student education, and so we're moving to just transitioning kids in on their third birthday, rather than waiting for everyone to come in in the fall. The other, the second thing is incarcerated parents within 12 months. The change here is that at one time, our enrollment criteria said that the parent needed, was incarcerated at that point. There is a huge impact on children when their parents have been incarcerated. So we did extend that to 12 months, because the impact is still there, whether it's at this moment or whether it's been within the prior 12 months. First-time families, we are trying to give some points to families who apply for the first time. We have a community who knows our program, who have had the opportunity to have one, sometimes two, sometimes more, children in our program, and while we welcome them back, they have had the benefit of our services. And so we're looking at giving just a few extra points to first-time families to give, to try to attract that and to get more first-time families in, so we can have a broader reach. And then the last thing was just a clarification, that there was no points for children 25 to 35 months. That doesn't mean that they're not eligible for the program, it just means that there are no extra points, because once a child is between two years and three, you know, that's only a year's worth of service, and they could just go on into the Head Start program and apply as a three-year-old, where we're looking, you know, we feel like we have the best benefit if we can have the kids for longer. So we really try to focus our intention on those that are birth-to-two, so that they can be served for a full year and not just partial year. And that's it. This will be brought before you, it has to be approved at a public hearing, because it is a board policy, so we're hoping to have you approve it at the May 20th public hearing.
Any questions, board members?
No. Thank you, Jeanne.
Mrs. Dozier?
No.
Thank you very much for always having such a professional report.
Thank you.
I guess that concludes the briefing part of our agenda. We have time for public comment. Has anybody given you what?
What about our legislative piece? That should have been listed at the very front, but it just said, "Board member," it didn't. didn't follow through on the legislative piece, so.
Mrs. Dozier, would you like to give a report, or did we agree that I was going to start?
I think you were going to start, and then I'm going to, I'm going to X out anything that you say.
Okay. So we just had a conversation with our legislative representative this midday today. Brief updates. Educational data security, under Florida law, assuming these are all signed by Governor Scott, there will be no biometric data collected on children. Single gender public school programs, criteria for establishing single gender public school programs have been, have been written. The biggies are instructional materials. That essentially is where I think we left you last, which is that the state will continue to, to preview curriculum to ensure that it, our materials, to ensure that it meets state guidelines, but school districts will be making the adoption. New is that the school board will be required to have a public hearing on recommended curricula before authorizing the curricula. And there will be a complaint process for any member of the public who wishes to challenge a choice on the, that the district has made. Is that? Thank you. School accountability is essentially unchanged from when we first started reporting about it. It's, it's as it was laid out by Pam, Commissioner Pam Stewart. There, there will be a school report system, but there will be a one-year delay on penalties. Education, the vouchers. They have, the legislature has expanded the use of vouchers for exceptional student education, and I would have to ask Dr. Graham to comment on the impact of that.
Well, I think Amy and I were trying to figure that out as we were listening today, because it, if more children are able to walk away and go where they want, and we're pretty much footing the FTE, there could be great impact. I think, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I'm sure we're able to predict at this point with the impact. Do you want it? But it has certainly widened the net for people who want to take advantage of a voucher.
To us that in next fiscal year FY15, what will happen is the, the state itself has set aside a pot of money, and the state will, 18.4 million, I think he said, and the state will administer that based on who applies for these vouchers, or what they're calling personal learning accounts. Then after that point, in FY16, it will actually be a more direct hit to individual districts. So at that point, we'll have, it'll be deducted from our FEFP payment based on what students in our district will apply for these personal learning accounts. Not to say that it's not a hit in FY15, because it really is, that 18.4 million, had they not set that aside, it probably would have been in public education inside of the FEFP that everyone was getting.
Right. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that concludes what we covered today in our conversation.
Mrs. Dozier.
Okay, well, I'm going to start with the budget. The final outcomes as understood in the budget from the budget conference, what it is, is the total potential for the FEFP. We wanted the House position, which would have been about 80 million above the Senate-wide, but we ended up with about 150 million below what the House was, and 70 million below what the Senate was. So we didn't get what, you know, what we wanted there, but that's basically what the, what we ended up with. As far as dual enrollment requirement, we're still going to have to pay the college tuition. We wanted the House position, which would have reduced the cost for school districts statewide by about 40 million, but instead, we ended up with the Senate position, which maintained the new mandated cost as established last year. In other words, there was just a deaf ear to anything that we said as far as the dual enrollment. So if we continue to elect to have the dual enrollment, the districts across the state will bear the cost. And, you know, this is one of the things, I'm going to get on a soapbox for just a minute about this, you know, this is one of those programs that is an enhancement, that we were encouraged by the state to participate in and, and give students this opportunity, just like the many scholarship programs that we have, and they've cut back on a lot of the scholarship programs. Well, now, all of a sudden, you know, we have participated in the programs like the, you know, the legislature has encouraged us to do over the years, but now the funding has been cut back, and it, you know, it's, it's on our backs to do that. So either we have to continue the program the way it is, and we're going to have to fund it, or we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And I know that all of you probably received emails and such from, from parents saying, you know, "This is going to hurt if my child can't do the dual enrollment," and so forth. So that's another one of those decisions that in the future, we might have to make. If we're not getting funding for it, are we going to continue that program? Or it might have to be something that, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, Mr. Martin, but, you know, could it be that a student pays for it? But in the future, you know, we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and that's one of those decisions. As far as the extra hour for instruction, 300 schools or 100 schools, we prefer the House position, which would maintain that 100 schools where the extra hour of instruction was mandated, but instead, we got the Senate position, which we believe mandates the extra hour of instruction at the bottom, 300 elementary schools statewide, which I think we have a couple of schools that would fit into that category, and that's an estimated of an additional $60 million additional cost statewide. As far as the Fern, we wanted the Senate position, the DMS bandwidth services. We wanted the Senate position that did not include this mandate estimated to cost districts 23.4 million, and we believe that we got the Senate position and, on this issue, and that we shouldn't have to bear any cost on this. As far as local testing limits, we wanted the House position that there was a silent and new blackout periods where the district developed tests and could not be administered. We believe that we got the House position on this issue as well. As far as PICO funding, we wanted the House's position of the funding with the Senate's distribution and a no carve-out for St. John's County, but the House provided 16 million more for K-12 in the PICO maintenance statewide. We don't really know how that will affect us or if it will, but it's going to be, it's going to be a moderate cost, if any. Let's see, let's see. Senate Bill 1702, which is a bill that deals with the voluntary pre-K and the people that can apply, the language has just been changed somewhat, and I'm sure, I should have asked that question to Jeanne when she was up here. Have you looked at that, that language yet? Is it going to affect any of our families?
For B-18?
Uh-huh.
Not.
The Senate Bill 886, the supply bill will have a second, well, it had its second reading and it passed, so our teachers will get some supply money. Already talked about the Fern issue, talked about the dual enrollment issue. That's basically kind of a quick summation of how we have been, of course, the hazardous walking conditions, that did pass, and that just simply means that if we've got any hazardous walking conditions in any area, for instance, let's say that we have a hazardous area out in North Fort Myers, well, then we would need to talk with the county about that, and we would have to prove that we have talked with the county. If we don't, then we could end up bearing the cost for having to put in those sidewalks. What I will tell you is that FSBA actually is going to have a complete report during the conference in June on Friday, but none of us really have to go to that, that particular update on the legislative piece, because Bob Serra will be here, and I don't know if John's going to come with him, but they will be here on the 20th to actually, during the meeting, to actually present to us all of the effects of legislation and go into all the legislation at an in-depth piece. So that's where we are with that. I'm going to tap into that with something else with FSBA. What did I do with that? Okay, I got something from FSBA the other day. At the June meeting, when the actual, the bylaws say that the Florida school boards have to change the Board of Directors or, or elect new Board of Directors on the even-numbered districts in 2014. We are an even-numbered district, Lee County, so I'm bringing it up now, because I think I could have brought it up in the 20th, but I just went ahead to bring it up, so we could go ahead and get the paperwork. I will be more than happy to continue to serve on the Board of Directors if that's, if that meets everybody's. If not, if somebody else wants to step up?
That's good.
And we need to provide them with an alternate as well? Do you want to? Okay, Ms. Benzinger, will you put that letter forth to FSBA, showing that we've came to agreement on that? And that's all of it.
The board member comments?
I have nothing right now, thank you.
It's 3:43, and we have time for public comment. Is there, do you have any cards?
No, ma'am, but we will need to ask for anyone who wishes to address the board.
Okay, and would you then please address board policy with respect to public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning a matter on this briefing meeting agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the agenda, the time allowed per speaker is three minutes.
Is there anyone on the right side of the audience who wishes to speak? Ms. Michael? Anybody on the left side? Mr. Thomas and Lori Fahey? I'm sorry, Mrs. Fahey.
Dr. Graham, board members, I want to thank you and Dr. Bohatch for addressing our concerns. It's very scary for a bus driver to have police cars come and surround them, because a student on the bus is dialed 911. So it's protection for all of the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Good afternoon, members of the board. I heard earlier your comments about the expanding of the board. I got to tell you, my heart is filled with great joy. Just on a side, just got a text from Ray Rodriguez. He's on his way here, he's parking his car, he wants to speak on this issue. So I don't know how you guys do that, but State Representative Rodriguez is parking outside to come and speak to the board about this. He's also very excited about the opportunity of allowing the voters of Lee County to expand the school board and have single-member districts. This really has been a great team effort, and I want to thank Mrs. Morgan. When I came to Mrs. Morgan some time ago, she agreed to quarterback this issue, and she had the dean of the school board, Mrs. Dozier, by her side, but when Mrs. Fisher went along and gave us the three votes that we needed, I think she kind of brought the other two guys along. There's a saying, I've heard people say this, is that when you have a problem and you need someone to fix it, you better get a woman. And I think the three women on this board have shown us how a problem that has been in existence for so long, about having a government that is fair, that is representative of the people, and that is closest to the people. You three women, along with our two fellow men on the board, you guys have led the way on this issue. I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of what you're going to be voting on. I know I spoke with Ms. Fisher this morning, she said that she's actually going to bring the issue up later this evening for an actual vote. I would just say to the school board members, I'm always asking for stuff. So the other thing I'd like to tell you is the county commission today in a 3-2 vote, voted to do a public hearing and to have, allow the public...
Excuse me?
Oh, there's Ray, he's just got here. The county commission voted today to allow to go forward term limits. And I really think that as we do this approach of reforming the government and allowing the people to have their say, I really would encourage the three women on the board to also look and solve that issue of having term limits for the school board come before the voters. As I told the three guys on the, on the county commission that voted for it, term limits has never been defeated anywhere in the country. I believe if you give the voters of Lee County the opportunity to vote on whether or not they want to have term limits, and term limits is an issue that is, I think is just instrumental to making the government work for the people, citizen servants. Does that light me my time's up? I didn't see a yellow light. But anyway, I thank you guys so much, I'll come back later, but I just want to thank our three fantastic women on the school board for getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fahey?
I don't think it was brought up during, well, I know it wasn't brought up during the Code of Conduct and the Parent Guide. I noticed online that the, there was an elimination of the wording for the extracurricular activities, including sports club tutoring, sports clubs tutoring, and school-sponsored activities. I'm wondering why that would have been removed and, and what implications that has. So I'm hoping it doesn't get removed from our policies and parent guidelines. You're looking confused. Did you not see it on the?
Well, what I guess I'd like you to do is reference specifically what it is you're talking about, so that we're able to look at it.
It was beginning on page five of the Parent Guide and Student Code for 2014-15.
Okay, what do I go?
And I didn't see the wording replaced anywhere on it.
Dr. Bohatch, is he still here?
No. I think Dr. Sbarro just went to get him.
Oh, okay. Well, then, we'll just postpone that for a minute and...
Did you have a copy of that with you?
Why don't you take a seat, and we'll have Representative Rodriguez come up and address this, since I know he rushed to get here to do just that. Good afternoon.
And thank you for having me up. I just want to come up here and commend you on your actions to go to referendum on your board number and your method of election. My understanding is that you're going to propose tonight, go into referendum to expand the board from five to seven, and to move to a hybrid of five single-member districts with two at large. As someone that served on Charter Review Committee for the Lee County Board of Commissioners in their last charter review, one of the things we learned as we studied this is that typically boards that have five members that are elected at large work very well for small rural counties with low population. And as counties get larger and their population increases, in order to have a more effective board, it's needed or necessary to expand and to change the electoral method. And what we learned is that in Florida, among urban counties, and that definition includes all counties with a population of 600,000 or more, all of them except for Lee County, had moved towards a hybrid method of elector, electing their boards. And so as you know, we still have the five-member at-large in both our Lee County School District and our Lee County Board of Commissioners, but I want to commend you for being the board that's going to lead the way to take the electoral method that this county has and drag it into the 21st century where it belongs. So thank you for your actions, and I look forward to supporting that effort at the polls this November. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Fahey, you may come back to the podium because the answer to your question just walked in. Why don't you repeat your question?
I was just looking at Parent Guide and the Student Code of Conduct.
Yes, ma'am.
And noticed that the whole paragraph regarding extracurricular activities had been removed. And I didn't notice that it had been reworded.
No, it hasn't been removed.
It was all highlighted.
It's highlighted and lined through.
Because we've made changes, that's why.
To the entire thing?
That...
It's different language. That's why it's highlighted.
That piece sticks where that consequence is there.
Okay.
What we added, we changed the discipline. Students who weren't involved or aren't involved in extracurricular activity would face internal suspension.
No, I think she's talking about in the beginning, there is a section about parent, how can parents be involved? And the entire page on extracurricular activities, including sports clubs tutoring.
Oh, I got you. I got you. I got you.
I don't see where anything was reworded. It looks like it was all just scratched out.
No, I got you now.
It looks like that's just been removed.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good question.
Completely removed.
And I don't have a good answer.
Well, I was nervous we were going to remove those things.
No, it could be maybe because redundant, you know, it was redundant throughout the rest of the code. And I'm trying to remember, did we talk about that in the committee meeting?
Call me.
I could, I could certainly on the Director from the Superintendent of Board Recommendation put that back in.
It may be, I'm just guessing, and it doesn't matter to me either way, but I think a lot of what's in there, you have in the Student Rights and Responsibilities.
Redundant, yes. That's what I...
And so, I think Ms. Fahey, if you go, if you go to Students Rights and Responsibilities, there's, it's not as detailed, but it talks about how students are able to participate in their, actually, it's their responsibility to get involved in activities, participate in educational opportunities.
Right, but, but on here, it actually, what was removed is every school provides a wide variety of opportunities for students and parents to become involved in extracurricular activities. And it's very specific. Our kids already are not getting the 150 minutes mandated PE. We're not getting recess. I, we can't let them lose the extracurricular activities.
Morgan, with the, yeah, with the comment time being done, and may I suggest that you, that the superintendent instruct Dr. Bohatch to discuss this issue with Ms. Fahey and try to clarify.
Took the words from my mouth. Thank you. Yes. So, Dr. Bohatch, you'll take care of this?
Yes, ma'am.
On the instruction of Dr. Graham. And you'll get back to us. Okey-dokey. All right. Any other, any other public comment? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned and the next meeting of the school board will be this evening at 6:00 PM.
My name is Rick Barta and I'm the Teacher on Assignment for the Teach American History Grant. And it's been a wonderful opportunity with the grant to help teachers better learn their American history, even though they know American history forwards and backwards, but also new ways to teach American history. This year, we've had the opportunity to study about the Holocaust. And tonight, we have the wonderful opportunity to have some Holocaust survivors here. And this is arranged in conjunction with the Southwest Florida Holocaust Museum and Education Center, which is based down in Naples. And the person in charge or who's leading that charge helping us is Sam Parish. He's the educational director down there.
Oh, hi.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. And again, yeah, I'm from the Holocaust Museum and Education Center of Southwest Florida is its new official name, referred to as the Holocaust Museum. We're doing a panel presentation. This is my first experience with a panel presentation. The idea is to have three different fascinating stories. Each person will give about a 15 or so-minute overview of their story. That is absolutely an overview because they could easily speak for an hour giving even more fascinating detail. But for brevity, they're going to talk about 15, 20 minutes, give you a general overview of their story, and then open, open the floor up to questions. And that's really what we're hoping for, is a really good, robust question and answer period, being able to maybe compare and contrast. We have three different speakers here tonight. I'd like to welcome Ms. Renee Bedouk.
Thank you.
Renee will discuss her story as a, as a hidden child in France. That's one perspective we have. Mr. Jacques Van Damme, and he will discuss his story of, of the underground of, of, what was the term diving? And of being a hidden child in, in Holland. And then Mr. Steen Metz will discuss his experience in Denmark and a different story about his experience at Terezienstadt. So, we will hear from all three. I think it's fair that we start with Renee and then maybe just work this way here. Then we'll open the floor up to question and answers. We've got microphones there. I will sit back and observe and listen and only chime in when absolutely necessary. So, if we could start with 15 minutes or so from Renee?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was born in Paris, France, of French naturalized parents. My father was born in Poland, came to France as a young man, enlisted in the French Foreign Legion, then the French Army, and became a French citizen. My mother was the youngest of six. The oldest three were born in Poland and the younger three were born in Astrakhan, Russia, not too far from the Caspian Sea. How my parents met, I have no idea. We lived in Paris in a predominantly Jewish neighborhood with my maternal grandmother. My parents spoke French without an accent and my grandmother also spoke French, but with a bit of an accent because she was older. My grandmother became a widow at a young age with six children and, as was the case, the oldest daughter. How she did it, I don't know, but she managed to bring all the children to France where they established themselves. After the First World War, France built a series of fortification along the French-German border called the Maginot Line in honor of the ministre of the army at the time, thinking that that would stop any future invasion by the Germans. The Germans were very smart and they forgot about the Maginot Line. And at first, they went to Austria. They went east, Poland, Czechoslovakia, and then they decided to go west. So, in less than two weeks, they went from Germany to France, crossing Holland, Belgium, Luxembourg, and in less than two weeks, they were in Paris to the great shock of the French government at the time. They called upon the hero of the First World War, Marshal Pétain, to save the nation. And what he did is he cut France in two, so-called to save his compatriots. He cut France in two. I don't have a map, but it went like this. There was not an actual fence, but it was patrolled. And the upper part, including Paris, was the occupied zone and the Nazis occupied Paris. And Marshal Pétain and his government went in the free zone in Vichy, so-called free zone. And France was cut in two like that from May of 1940 to November of 1942. I, my oldest aunt, on my mother's side, I'm always speaking my mother's side, her husband, my uncle, had a lung disease, not from smoking, but from working in the coal mines of Poland at the age of eight. He needed an operation, which at the time was only done in New York. We had cousins who came from Poland to New York. I would say in the early '30s. I'm not exactly sure when, but they were well-established. And so, my aunt and uncle asked them to make papers for them and they wanted to take the last boat out of France, out of Marseille in 1940. For some reason, they didn't get on the boat. And so, they decided they were not going to go back to Paris. And how they wound up, probably by bus, in the center of France, a province called Auvergne. And they settled there on a farm. My uncle was very handy with his hands, so whatever money they had, he worked and traded. He did little things. He made frames for them and stuff like that. And that's how, and borrowed for goods to live on. He wanted my parents, we were still living in Paris with my grandmother, and he wanted my parents to leave Paris. And finally, they did. And what I remember, I was a child, probably either seven and a half or eight. And what I remember, I was a child, probably either seven and a half or eight, is that we traveled at night. I was told, "Don't cry, don't sneeze, don't cough, nothing out of your mouth." And we traveled mostly on what I think were old ox-drawn carts and that type of thing, escorted by the Free French. I remember also, because it stuck in my mind, that I, for a while, I was on the shoulders of a young man going to join the Free French in what was the free zone of France. My parents settled in Clermont-Ferrand, which is the capital of the province of Auvergne. My father was a tailor by trade. My aunt and uncle wanted them and me to come to the countryside, but I guess my father thought that he needed to work. And he thought of himself as French, so they opened up, he opened up a shop, which in those days was just an apartment with some machines, you know, and we lived next door. My grandmother had not wanted to leave Paris because, I said, it was a predominantly Jewish neighborhood. Everybody knew her, and so she stayed in Paris. After a while, my aunt and uncle finally persuaded my parents to put me, since they didn't want to go, but to put me on a farm in the country. So they found this family for me in a little village about 20 or 30 kilometers from Clermont-Ferrand called Estandeuil. And this was a farm, and they had six children already. Well, the oldest one was the farmer's wife, child by her first marriage. And I have a picture, because I don't have it here, but it's in the, of the whole family, and at the end you see this little thing, so it can't be more than, it has to be about eight. And they took very good care of me. I miss my parents, but you take a little girl who's used to a big city like Paris and then Clermont-Ferrand, and you put her on a farm with all the animals and the cows, and I was given a goat to take care of and feeding the chickens, and so I was not unhappy. I miss my parents. I know that I went at least once or twice to see them, and I knew that my mother came several times, and I never knew how she came. I found out two years ago, three and a half years ago. She came by bicycle all the way to see me. So my parents didn't want to leave Clermont-Ferrand. So in 19, the end of 1942, France was totally occupied by the Nazis. In the meantime, my grandmother alone in Paris was being, went to a store. In those days, there were no supermarkets, so there were just the, you know, neighborhood stores, and everybody knew her. And she was being waited on, and the lady came in and wanted to be waited on immediately. And the owner said, "Well, when I finish with Madame Benash, I will wait on you." That person, from what was told, relayed to me many years later, was a woman who went to the military, who went to the French police, which was associated with the Nazis. There were some very good policemen who protected the Jews, but a lot of them were associated with the Nazis. And at the age of 73, my grandmother was taken from center of Paris to the, to Drancy. Drancy is a northern suburb of Paris, and it was the departure point for all the convoys going to Auschwitz. People stayed, it was a former barracks. It was not really, I mean, they couldn't get out. They could get messages out because there were French people who worked in Drancy and got messages out for them. When my, another aunt, another of my mother's sisters, found out that my grandmother had been taken, her husband, who was Polish, had already been deported, but she went, she put her son, who was a year younger than me, with a fam, with another family, and went to be with her mother. And that was in the end of 1942. When my mother, in Auvergne, because at that time it was still separated, found out about that, she armed, I don't know how she got, how she knew people who made false papers, but she has false papers made for herself and for my cousin. And she went to Paris and got my cousin. And on the way back, by the border, or just below the border, they were stopped, not by DSS, but by young German soldiers. And they put them in, what my cousin remembers, to him it was like an old castle, and they put all the women to work in the kitchen, and all the soldiers wanted to know whether they were Jewish or not. And my cousin said, "No, my mother had the false papers." He thinks, it was a couple of months, what the Nazis did, at least in France, with the men, they would, wanted to see if they were circumcised or not, they didn't do that with the boys. So my cousin kept saying he was not Jewish, and finally, he said, he presumed that the soldiers got tired of taking care of them, so they let them go. And my mother brought my cousin back to Clermont-Ferrand. And a little while later, she put him also near me, but on another farm. I stayed on the farm for three and a half years. And then I found out in the summer of 19, well, in the fall of 1943, that my parents had been taken. I don't remember exactly how I was told, but that's when they were taken. And they were taken from Clermont-Ferrand to Paris and to Drancy, and then they were, they were taken in the summer and dry of 1943, and the 7th of October, they were on a convoy to Auschwitz. Taken also with them was a friend of my parents, and so he was with them even on the convoy to Auschwitz. He doesn't remember seeing my mother after they arrived, but he was with my father until the 22nd of February, 1945. And they went from Auschwitz to Buchenwald, to Elrich, I think, and Bergen-Belsen, and there'd been another one in the middle, but, and he was sure that my father had survived, but my father never came back. After three and a half years, my aunt and uncle decided, well, Paris was liberated, to come back to Paris, but out of the brothers and sisters, nobody was willing or had the means to take care of two young orphans. And so they wrote to the cousins again, and we came, instead of making the papers for two people, they made the papers for four, with the two orphans. And we, and that's how I came to the U.S. The first few weeks, we stayed with the cousins. I don't know, am I over the time?
You've got a good six, seven minutes.
Well, the first few weeks, we stayed with the cousins in Brooklyn, sleeping in the living room of one of them, on cards, my aunt, my uncle, myself, and my cousin. And they decided that we should learn, to learn English, we should go to school. I mean, I had just turned 12 before we left. My cousin was not quite 11. We had to learn English. Now, I had started in Paris, my first year of the lycée, which is equivalent even a little more than your high school. So my country education on the farm, I went to school, I went to church. But when we got to New York, they put us in kindergarten. So you can imagine what I felt like. What I remember of the school was an old building, and the cafeteria was on a lower level, and we had to go down for midnight snack, and little boys held the hands of little girls going down, and I held my cousin's hand, and the two of us, a head taller than everybody else. I was mortified. After a few months, about a few weeks, probably around, I think around five, six weeks, my aunt and uncle got an apartment in Flushing, Queens. However, it was a small apartment, so there was only one bedroom, my aunt and uncle, of course, and my cousin and I slept on trundle beds in the living room and fought like cats and dogs. And then the Board of Education was a little smarter. They decided, no, they were going to put us in the class of our age group. And after school, for three months, they gave each of us a tutor with instructions. After three months, you sink or swim. So we swam. That's why I'm not exactly in favor of Esal, but that's my personal opinion. I can put that, I can say that in front of teachers. That, as I said, on the farm, I was not, I was, I was a happy child. And I was an unhappy child when I was told that I'm an only child, and I no longer had parents, even though the family really loved me and took very good care of me. But when I got to the States, my whole life changed. I mean, there was, everything was different. And us two budding teenagers always fighting was really, both of us being very unhappy each in our own way. My cousin now lives, I didn't grow that much, but he grew to 6'4", and he lives in St. Louis. So I shortened it enough.
That's perfect.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, now, Mr. Jacques Van Damme.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Jacques Van Damme. I was born in the Netherlands in 1932, so now you can start to calculate. And I don't speak well English as Sam Parrish does, but I will try to make it understood. And I'll give you a short overview of my life from the moment that the Germans invaded the Netherlands. That was the 10th of May, 1940. First, I have to tell you, my family, I had a French mother, and I had a Dutch father, and the family of my father lived already in the Netherlands from the 1600s. And they got Dutch names, that's why I'm called Van Damme, which is typically Dutch, in the time of Napoleon. Then Napoleon said, "All people have to be equal." And the Jewish people that lived in the Netherlands already peacefully for a good century, they had to take Dutch names. So before that time, they had biblical names, Hebrew names, but from that moment on, it was, it had to be a Dutch name. So we were very Dutch, completely integrated in the, in the Dutch society. And together with all the Dutchmen, in the night of, the 10th of May, 1940, we heard planes flying over, bombs falling, was a lot of noise, and nobody knew what was happening. Then we heard over the radio that the Germans had invaded our country. You know, that Hitler, finally, he wanted to go to England, so we had to go to the western part of Europe first in order to go to England and conquer England from there on, but luckily enough, that never succeeded. Anyway, you must realize, the Dutch, we never had known a war, I think, for, in those years, for 400 years, we had not known a war. We're a very peaceful country, a very, a very open country, a very tolerant country. To give you some examples, the Yugenots were going to the Netherlands when they were not able to live in France anymore because of the Catholic influence in those days. So they came to the Netherlands, because the Netherlands said, "Whoever wants to come here, practice his own religion. We are tolerant, you can do whatever you like, as long as you respect the laws of the country and live accordingly." Then, in around 1600, the Jews that were expelled from Spain, from the Iberic Peninsula, Spain and later also Portugal, came to the Netherlands because the Netherlands were a free country. The Jewish people that came to the Netherlands integrated completely, they became Dutch. They had very important positions in the Dutch society, and we, we were Dutch, we spoke Dutch, we were very Dutch. When the Germans invaded our country, everybody was completely shocked because we knew what was going on in the eastern part of Europe. The Germans had started World War II, you know, by the invasion in Poland, 1st of September, 1939, and we knew that didn't, that didn't promise many good things. Several people knew what was going on in Germany, for the Jews that lived in Germany, even if they were only 1% of the population in Germany, but the Germans, especially Hitler, needed scapegoats for the situation that Germany was in after World War I, when they had lost the war, and they had to pay very high fines and reparation money, and Germany was completely en shambles. But I will not go into history, you must certainly be better informed than I am in that, in that respect. Anyway, I go on from the 10th of May, 1940. For the kids, I was then seven and a half years old. We did not understand what was going on. The only thing that we knew, that bombs were falling, and we were looking for shells that fell from the bombs, and who had the greatest shell was the, was the, was the big winner. At the first year, we did not even realize what it was to have a German occupation. That started only in 1941, and from here we go a little bit further. Because the Germans issued rules, the Germans were completely in control of the Netherlands. Why? Because the royal family and the whole government fled to England, which really, looking afterwards was a shame. So we were completely left to the mercy of the Germans. The Germans said, "We do not want to have Jews anymore in this country, like we do not want to have them in, in, in Germany." So we felt that at a certain moment, there was a segregation coming. We were, they tried to separate us from the Dutch normal population. That went worse and worse and worse. Jews were not allowed to go on the streetcars, Jews were not allowed to go to coffee houses. I remember that in those days, they said, "Jewish kids only have to go to Jewish schools." So I went to a Jewish school. I went to a normal Dutch school before, but afterwards, there were only Jewish kids in our, in our school. Then we felt something was starting because several days, a couple of kids did not show up anymore, and we knew something bad was happening. What they did, I give you an example. In our neighborhood, at the end of my street, there was an ice cream parlor. That ice cream parlor was designed that Jewish kids could go to that ice cream parlor, only that ice cream parlor. Now, I lived in a street where, around the corner, and Frank lived. So us, being a lot of Jewish kids in the neighborhood, we went to that ice cream parlor. People asked me sometimes, "Did you know Aunt Frank?" Of course, I knew, I knew all the kids, but who realized who Aunt Frank was in those days? Because what, what she went through did not happen yet, it only started in 1942. It became worse in 1942 when the Germans issued the following rules. Jews had to wear a star of David on their clothes, a yellow star, and in the middle of that star was written "Jew." You can see those, those stars when you go to the museum, they're all exposed there. Why did they do that? Because they wanted the people to know, the people that wear that star on their clothes, and if you did not do that, there were heavy, heavy, heavy fines. You could be picked up by the police, you could be deported, and nobody knew where you would be deported. The official excuse of the Germans was, "We want to deport the Jews to work camps." That was the official reading of their rules. So there we were. As a kid, as of six years on, I was wearing a yellow star of David on my clothes. What, did that change our lives? Well, I give you some examples. For instance, there was a curfew for Jewish people. We were not allowed to be on the streets after 8:00 p.m. in the evening. And, you know, as kids, in the, in the springtime, when the evenings get longer and it's still light outside, we, as kids, we played on the streets. All of a sudden, we realized, wow, it's 8 o'clock, and it was dangerous for us to be on the streets with our star of David, because police, that collaborated with the Germans, saw who we were, and we were liable to be picked up. And picked up meant that you were brought to a special spot where they gathered all the people that they had picked up and transported in vans to that place. the people that they had picked up and transported in vans to that place, which afterward were sent to a transition camp in the Netherlands. What was a transition camp? I jumped from left to right, and right to left. But a transition camp was a camp where they kept Jewish people before transporting them in, for instance, the boxcars that you can see at the Holocaust Museum, to the so-called work camps, which as of 1942, became extermination camps. We knew something was very bad, so nobody wanted to do that. Although, people did not know exactly what was going on in the eastern part of Europe, which was mainly Poland. Why did they choose Poland? Because Poland was an extremely anti-Semitic country. So the Germans didn't fear that there would be a resistance from the Polish people. They were free to do there whatever they liked to do. Making a long story short, again, from the beginning of 1942, we saw that Jews were sent to that transition camp in the Netherlands. How could the Germans do that? They had created a kind of ghetto in Amsterdam. In that ghetto, they gathered all the Jewish people living in the Netherlands that were not living in Amsterdam. They were obliged to go and live in that ghetto, that got overcrowded at a certain moment. From that ghetto, they could more easily pick up the people, transport them to the transition camp, and from there, send them to the so-called work camps. Many people, among those, my father, my father was part of a, let's call it underground group, that was a group that sabotaged the rules of the Nazis and did everything they could to, to find, to find ways not to, not to have to follow the instructions that the Nazis gave. And they, they realized that something was very wrong in the eastern part of Europe. By the eastern part, I mean eastern part, part of Germany and especially Poland, because most of the concentration camps, almost all of them, were situated in Poland, Poland and Austria. That's where they were situated. How to escape there? So there was only one way. We called it, let's dive. And dive meant go underground, go to places where they cannot trace you, where they cannot find you, and where you don't have the risk that they, that you are picked up and sent to the transition camp, and from there, further on, to the so-called work camps that were extermination camps, as I explained to you. But how to find a place, where to hide? Realizing that the Germans, they imposed rules, they said, if we catch somebody helping Jewish people or people that we want to have, because they not only wanted to have Jewish people, they only want, they also wanted to have younger people. Why younger people? Younger people means peoples from 16 years onwards. Because in Germany, all the young people were in the army, they had no people anymore, there had no workforce anymore. So they needed people to work in those factories. And they picked the people in several countries, not only in the Netherlands, also in Belgium, later also in France, and they sent them to factories for slave labor. They were treated very badly there, there was starvation there, they, they, they maltreated people in a horrible way. So it was not only Jewish people that they were after, they were also after young people, to transport them to Germany, so they could work in their, in their factories. But how to find a place? Because the Jews lived in a, in a, in a kind of close community, did not know many people outside of that community. So try to find, try to find a place to hide, where to go. My father had a possibility to know a lot of people, because he was part of that underground, as I told you. And so we succeeded in have contacts with that underground, that consisted of many young people, many students, but also older people, that, that did not like the Germans to be in the Netherlands, because the Germans were not liked at all. And from there, they found a place for me to hide. I will keep it very short, because I'm, I can speak only 15 minutes or 14 and a half, First, they sent me to a place, in that place, I could not stay very long. It was a, it was kind of a safe place. The family of a ranger of the royal woods, the royal family, had their own woods in the Netherlands. And in order to maintain well the situation of those woods, take care of the animals there, they had rangers that did that, and I was sent to a ranger family. Until one day, we got raided by German troops that had heard that there were weapons hidden in several houses, so all of a sudden, it was swarming with, with German soldiers. As a kid, I was then 10 years old, I could just escape into the woods, I could find a shed that was in the woods that I knew, because as a kid, I was playing in those woods. And it was a two-story wooded shed, a little bit poor, but okay. They kept food for the animals there, because in the winter time, you can, the animals can't find food, and they had to feed the animals. Anyway, I climbed to the second floor and through the small openings in the, in the, in the wooden walls, I could see and hear the soldiers, because they made a lot of noise. But after two nights and one day, they left, I could get out. And I went to the very other side of the woods, there was another ranger that I knew, and I said, can I stay the night over here? Yes. But many people knew, people that were part of the underground, so he warned people what the underground is, and I have a Jewish kid here, can you take care of him? And he did. And first, they brought me back to Amsterdam. My parents were in Amsterdam, they were hiding in a, in a small house somewhere, a blue-colored labor house. Blue-colored people that worked in, in the factories, my, my, I saw my parents again. But I could not stay there very long, because, I mean, I was, in those years, I had a lot of, this is long ago, a lot of black hair, the Dutch are blond, so they, they would spot me immediately in, on, on the streets, it's a different kid, he doesn't look like a Dutchman. Okay. So they found several places for me. And again, to make the long story short, I'm still in my time, I hope. I went to 12 or 13 different places, and there I could stay a week, there I could stay two weeks, there I could stay two days or three days. I even went to a place where it was two old ladies, they were very religious, and they told me that it was the fault of the Jews, because we had killed Jesus. So tell that to a boy of 10, 10, almost 11 years old, and you say, what's, what's, what's going on here? That went on for one and a half, two years. Then, the underground movement decided, because they took care of many of the kids like me, that a new place had to be found for me. And they found a new place for me in the northern part of the Netherlands. And that was fantastic, because they found a place with fantastic people, people that were Baptists, and they said, listen, we see you as the chosen people, we have to save you. Unbelievable, God bless them. They had a recognition from the Israeli government, after the war, you can see all those things in the museum, when you go there, there's a whole story that narrates that. And they called them the righteous among the nations. Those were the people that helped Jewish, saved Jewish kids. And the saying was, if you save one person, that means you have saved the whole world. I've become a little bit sentimental, but we go on, we go on, we go on. I slept in haystacks, I slept in a little towing boat that was more in the, in the lake, next to the village where I was, I was in a small farm, farmland village. And at night, I could not stay in that house anymore, because you never knew if the police were coming, because those people also had a son that was 10 years older than I was, and it was dangerous for him as well, because the Germans needed those young people to work in their factories, as slave laborers. In that little boat, I was alone by myself, I was then, I was then 11 years old. The only thing I could hear at night were the ducks and, and the other birds. But I can assure you that in the haystack, you sleep very, very, very well. I was one of the lucky kids that survived, because realize, we had, in the Netherlands, we had a little bit over 150,000 Jewish people. Only more or less 4,500, 5,000 kids survived. I'm the, I'm one of those, so I'm an exception, and I praise myself very lucky, thanking God every day for what he did for me. Fantastic, unbelievable. At a certain moment, when I came down from the haystack and talked to the farmer there, he said, listen, listen, I have good news for you, we have been liberated. We were liberated by the Canadian Army, because the Canadian Army, in those years, they, they fought together with the US Army, and I went to see the Canadians. Can you imagine what that was for me? I mean, it was, it was paradise, especially because I got something that I had never seen or tasted in my life, I got chewing gum. This, more or less, is my story, I keep it very short, I don't, not go into details what I went through, what I did, and so on, because I'm really waiting for your questions, and whatever question you have, I will be happy to give you more details about those years for Jewish kids in the Netherlands. Thank you very much. I stayed in the time, yeah?
That was perfect. All right, thank you so much. Yeah, you're both, you're both two for two. And now, we're going to hear from Mr. Steen Metz.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me in the back? You know, just to pick up on it, I think we're all very lucky to be here, it's a miracle that the three of us are here, considering the millions of people that died during the Holocaust. As a matter of fact, some time ago, I was talking to middle school students, I think they were eighth graders. It was a very deep question I got from one of those students, and he asked, do you feel lucky or guilty being alive? And I said to him, maybe I should feel guilty, but I don't, but I feel very lucky, it's, it's a miracle that we are here. But anyway, let me go back to my background very, very briefly. I was born in Denmark, I was born in the middle of the country, not on the east coast of Copenhagen, where most of the Jewish people lived. And I was born in 1935. The Germans invaded Denmark on April 9th, 1940. That was when the occupation of Denmark took place. But before I talk more about that, let me just tell you a little bit about what I tried to stress when I talked to students. And it's a very, very, I get a great deal out of it, I was very, very satisfied, because the students are very attentive and they ask some tremendous questions. And I tried to emphasize the theme, never forget. I don't want the students ever forget that the Holocaust did take place. Today, there are an increasing number of people all over the world that is denying that it actually took place. And as I tell the students, when they get home, you should talk to your family. I encourage them to talk to their family, I encourage them to talk to their friends. And if they can only remember one thing about what I talked about the Holocaust, then the day is made for me. In 15 to 20 years from now, none of the survivors will be around, so we have to rely on the next generation to carry it forward. And when I talk to the students, I always draw a parallel to the genocide in Turkey, which took place about almost 100 years ago. In 1915, a million and a half Armenians during the genocide were murdered by the Turks. Strangely enough, that includes my, my wife's grandfather, who was an attorney, he, he was killed by the Turks. Today, nobody in Turkey recognized that that war took place, that they killed all the Armenians. I tell the students, when they read the book, when they go to school in Turkey, if they did, they couldn't, they wouldn't learn a thing about what happened with the Armenians. And again, I don't want that to happen here 15 or 20 years from now, that nobody will remember the Holocaust. It's very, very important to me. The first three and a half years of the occupation in Denmark were relatively normal. This is quite different to the Netherlands, it's very different to what happened in Poland also. I don't want to take up too much of my time to tell you why it's different, but there are a couple of reasons, and I'd be more than happy to talk more about it later on. The Germans loved the Danish food, they loved the agricultural products there, we used to ship it to Great Britain, now we fed the army, we fed a part of Germany. There were relatively few Jewish people in Denmark, certainly compared to the Netherlands and Poland. At that time, there were about 7,500, and out of a population of 4,500,000 at that time, so it's a very small, very small percentage. Things were different in those days, contrary to what happened in the Netherlands. The Danish government continued to govern, the reigning King Christian X and the Queen remained in Denmark. I continued to go to school, I didn't go to Jewish school, didn't wear a yellow star. And so things were quite different in Denmark. That came to a sudden halt in the fall of 1943. At that time, the Germans put a lot of pressure on the Danish government. As an example, there was a lot of underground work, there was a lot of sabotage done by the younger people in Denmark. And at that time, the Germans had enough of it, because it was really increasing to a great extent, and they asked the Danish government, arrest the people that did the sabotage, and they should be sentenced to death. Obviously, that government couldn't, wouldn't implement that, they resigned, and the Danish administration took over. And that's when the final solution, the pursuit of the Jews started. I also want to add, and you mentioned Poland, there was a great, great deal of antisemitism in Poland, there was very, very little antisemitism in, in Denmark. I'm not saying there wasn't any, but there was very little. That's also one of the reasons why approximately 95% of the Jews in Denmark, with the help of the Danish population, they were totally behind them, they managed to escape to Sweden. And you may know, I'm sure you do, that Denmark on the east coast is very close to Sweden, and there's a straight small town, and you could literally go over there by boat, and there's only a mile and a half or two miles. Unfortunately, excuse me, my family, my father, my mother and myself, I was eight years old at the time, we were among the 5% that were arrested. Again, we lived in the middle of the country. One morning, Rosh Hashanah, Jewish New Year, Gestapo pounded on the door, and my father answered, and it was very early in the morning, and I, I really had no idea what was going on. I was born Jewish, my mother was born Jewish, my father was born Jewish, he was brought up in the Jewish faith, but I was not brought up in the Jewish faith. And in Denmark, you don't distinguish, well, you know, you're first of all a Dane, whether you're Jewish, whether you're black or brown or whatever, and that's the main thing. So as far as I'm concerned, I couldn't understand why they pursued us. And was it a crime to be Jewish? It's a crime when you're part of the Hitler regime, but for the rest of the world, that was not a crime. Anyway, we were arrested, we were deported to Theresienstadt in Czechoslovakia, at that time, it was called Czechoslovakia, today it's the Czech Republic. We spent three days and three nights in one of those boxcars, ended up in Theresienstadt, we had no idea where we were going to go. It's about 550 miles from Denmark. And eventually, we got there after three days and three nights, terrible time in the boxcar, no food, they didn't feed us. And eventually, we ended up in Theresienstadt. Theresienstadt is a German version, Thersen is a Czech version. Today, it's the Czech Republic, and Thersen is located about 40 miles north of Prague. So we spent the next 18 months, and I call it, in my book, about my Holocaust experience, A Danish Boy in Theresienstadt, I describe my experience there, and I refer to it as hell. When I, when we were arrested, I was eight years old, and when we arrived in Thersen, we had... When we were arrested, I was eight years old, and when we arrived in Tersin, they had separate barracks for women, for seniors, for children, and men. Since I was eight years old, I was allowed to stay with my mother. We stayed in a loft, in a barrack. It was very hot in the summer because it was so close to the ceiling. It was very cold in the winter. And my father would stay in barracks for men. Children, generally over 15 years old, would be in separate barracks. My grandmother was also there. She was 64, 65, and she stayed with all the seniors. Everybody worked 24/7, worked weekends, Christian holidays, Jewish holidays. My father, who was an attorney, he was able to continue to practice law in Denmark, even though he did not work for a Jewish company. If he had practiced law in Poland, Netherlands, he would not have been able to do that. He was exposed to some heavy construction work in the streets. They were physically abused. He was whipped. They wanted greater productivity. When you're an attorney, you're used to litigation in the courthouse, or you're used to sitting in the office. That kind of labor is very hard. We got very little food, and I'll touch on that in a couple of minutes. And he lost 50% of his body weight. He eventually died after less than six months of starvation, malnutrition. The certificate, and this was just typical Hitler regime, the certificate said he died of pneumonia. They were not going to issue a certificate that said anybody dying of starvation. Likewise, any agreement with Hitler didn't mean a thing. I forgot to mention to you, but Denmark had a non-aggression pact with Hitler, like a lot of other countries, and it didn't mean anything. Food, very little. Earth's coffee, substitute coffee for breakfast, a couple of slices of bread, occasionally some margarine. At lunch, more, a couple of slices of bread, and they called it potato soup. It was really boiled water with potato peels. We would stand in line with our bowl and our spoons, and somebody would... they had big barrels with the soup, and we would always try to get it from the bottom to get some potato peels. And the beginning, I didn't eat it, but if you wanted to exist, you just had to eat it. More soup at night, occasionally dumplings, and sometimes a bakery product called Buchtel. I think that's a German pronunciation, which is somewhere between a biscuit and a pastry, but that was very, very seldom. My mother also worked. She worked in a factory, worked with a mineral called mica, coming from the mountains in the Czech Republic, and was used, was sliced up, they filed it on the factory floor, and was used as insulation material for the planes. And there was a whole factory of women that worked in the factory. I was only eight years old. I also worked. I was a messenger. And when I talked to the students, it's very difficult for them to comprehend the world without iPhones or computers or TV. We didn't have that. And we didn't even get newspapers or heard any news. So my job was to carry documents from one barrack to the other, from one German office to the other. That was my job. And on the way, I passed the kitchen, and I was looking around to make sure there were no soldiers close by, and I would help myself to a couple of potatoes. You needed to do things like that, help you exist. We did start getting parcels of food from Denmark and Sweden. Every nationality in the Czech, in Theresienstadt, everybody was entitled to get parcels, but there was a lot of antisemitism in other countries, so the Danes probably got more parcels than any other country. I played soccer, a national sport in Europe, and I play on a gravel field. We had some football made from racks that my mother and other mothers prepared for us. One day, I came home to my mother, to the barrack, and I was very sad that my Czech friends were not there that particular day. My mother said, "I'm sure they'll be back in a couple of days." I had no idea what happened to them, but they were sent in transport, transport to extermination camps, or transport every, almost weekly at least, going to extermination camp. Theresienstadt was a concentration camp, but it was not an extermination camp. There was a major, major deception taking place on June 23rd, 1944. The Danish people, the Red Cross administration, had wanted to see what the Danish Jews, how they were, what were they up to, how were they treated? And Hitler saw that as a big opportunity for him, a great opportunity for propaganda. So he made sure the camp was less crowded. People were sent to extermination camps. Everything was cleaned up. Suddenly, there was green grass, there were flowers, there were restaurants, there were pavilions, there was music. And it was a play, it was like a play that was very carefully orchestrated. It took three postponements before they were ready to show the camp off. Eventually, they arrived on June 23rd, 1944, escorted by a Gestapo officer, walking around on a certain route. We had been warned not to talk to any of them, and they spent four, six hours there. They went back, and they got the complete wrong impression of what life in concentration camp was like. Theresienstadt has often been referred to as a model camp. As far as I'm concerned, it was a model camp for one day only, and that was the time when those visitors showed up. We were liberated on April 15th, 1945. You may or may not have heard of the white buses that came from Sweden, with very courageous drivers, bus drivers from Denmark and Sweden. Sweden was neutral throughout the war, and that's why they could send the buses down. That was also the reason that the Danish Jews could escape to Sweden. So they drove down, and I will always be very thankful for liberating us. I'll never understand how they were able to persuade the powers to be, but they did that, and the number of Scandinavian prisoners were liberated. There were 472 Jews, Danish Jews, sent to Theresienstadt. There were about 455 that survived. The rest died either of illnesses or most of them of starvation, like my father. At the end, there were, at the end, there were some young Danes. They married, fanned some marriages to some Czech young ladies to save more people. So we went back. We could not stay in Denmark. Denmark was still occupied. Went over to Sweden. We were in quarantine for about a week. They wanted to make sure there was no illnesses that we would bring into the country. On May 5th, which was the official day that the Germans surrendered in Denmark, and that was also Denmark celebrated after five years of occupation. And my mother and I came back to Denmark a couple of weeks later. And I've been very fortunate. I lived a relative normal life, certainly compared to other people with nightmares. And I've been in the food business all my life, and maybe subconsciously, I wanted to make sure that I would always have something to eat for the rest of my life. And my major mission today is to talk to students and civic organizations. And I'm really glad you are here today because Sam and the museum know that I like to get many more assignments because it means a lot to me, and I'm very pleased to have an opportunity to be here today. And nothing is better than seeing the attentiveness of the students and then the great questions they ask afterwards. So I think my time is about up.
It's perfect. Absolutely.
And all of us can continue, but thank you for being here.
It was actually a perfect time. It's exactly 6 o'clock. So now, what we want to do is have an opportunity for you folks to think about some questions, maybe compare and contrast, that kind of thing. And we've got a microphone there that works, so I don't know if you want to come up to the mic, or maybe we can bring the mic to you, and feel free to ask a question.
Take your time.
One question, maybe to get it started. One question we often ask is, "Did you ever meet Hitler?" Students often ask that. I never met Hitler. I don't think any of us ever met Hitler.
The kids ask that.
Yeah, it's quite common.
We probably wouldn't be here if we had met Hitler.
Actually, they do ask that question of every survivor talk, just about every survivor talk. And one person that we work with, the curator of the museum, his name is Laurie Mayer, her story's incredible as well, and she didn't meet Hitler, but she actually did see him. So it's not as crazy a question as it might sound. Of course, Hitler didn't really leave Germany either, and these folks were never, I don't think, well... Steen, I think you passed through Germany, but I don't think in general they were in Germany, therefore, the opportunity to meet Hitler was highly unlikely. But anyway, it's a great question, and I was kind of just stalling to conjure something up in case you had a question as well. After the liberation, in how many years did it take for you all to realize the extent of the full Holocaust?
Many. Not only many, but it's a fact known by psychiatrists that the reaction comes back after years. I only got it when I was in my mid-50s, and that was years after. Then the whole story comes back at a certain moment, and it's disturbing.
I don't think I fully realized the extent of it until I started writing my book, which was about probably seven years, seven, eight years ago, I started writing my book, and I did a lot of research, and I found some documents my mother had filled in after the war, and I really learned a lot. I even went back to Tersin to do some research, and I'm sure if my mother had been around, I could just hear her voice. She would say, "Steen, why would you want to go back? Once is more than enough." But it helps get closure. It really does.
Well, for many years, I never wanted to talk about what happened to me. And when I came here, and a cousin of my uncle, who was a very religious Jew in Brooklyn, said to my uncle, "Why don't you send Renee for the Easter Passover? She can have Passover with us." And I know that, because my grandmother lived with us, that we probably had a kosher home in Paris, but I didn't remember going to, particularly going to the synagogue or anything. But these people were very religious, and I was shocked because this woman, young, was, had to clean the house for Passover so there wouldn't be a drop, one piece of bread or one anything, you know? And I must say, she was very pregnant, and she would not accept my help. But we went... I was shocked because I was still, I said I was very unhappy, and I was. I had other things to work out in my mind. And with nieces and nephews of these, nieces of these people, we went to Prospect Park in Brooklyn one Sunday, and the whole subject of their discussion among these 16-year-old girls was very religious. In the Jewish religion, a woman wears a wig. And at 16-years-old, that was their whole subject. And I had gone through the war, and I didn't have parents, and I was not, I was not a happy, I became happier much later, but I was an unhappy teenager, and all these things were going through my mind. And a year later, I could not fathom that these girls had no idea what went on in Europe. And to me, I didn't stay the whole vacation. I called my uncle, and I said, "I'm coming home." It really bothered me.
I would like to add something. You have to realize, coming back to normal life after the war, in my situation, my parents, that luckily enough, I found back after the war, we all came back completely penniless. We had to restart our lives completely. You had, you were too busy to build up your life completely. I hadn't been to school for years. So you go to school again, you start to build up your life. You have to. And that's why you are too busy so many years that you don't even talk about what has happened. That comes back much more later. Something happens that all of a sudden, you are in the middle of what once was a disaster, and then you start to realize it. You dream about it, or you get upset about certain things, and that is psychologically, it's a very known fact. I wanted to explain it to you.
Well, I think you don't forget, but you push a lot of memories. I know I did. Just push them back. Don't want it.
I also, like in my case, and I think that's quite normal, my mother really tried to protect me when we got back, and we talked very little about it. And that's typical of all survivors. They don't talk about it at all. And my mother really wanted to protect me, and there were people that would ask questions after the war when we came back. "What did you do? What did you get to eat?" And so on, and she said, "If you have any questions, please address them to me." She really wanted to protect me, but you never forget it. You try to put it back in your mind, but there's no way you will ever, you'll ever forget it.
One, I was wondering if you ever went back and walked to the places where you stayed at? You ever, you know, sometimes when we've had something bad in our life, we tend to go back to that place, and that's our closure. Did you ever go back and visit those places that you stayed at?
The answer is yes. I stayed very close in contact with that Baptist family that saved my life for many years, and I kept very close with my, which I called my war brother. He was 10-years-old than I was, and I was very close to him. Yes.
And then the same for you. Like, did you, do you still keep in contact with the family?
Well, no. Since my life changed so drastically, and as I said, I put everything, I was thankful that they took care of me, and I remembered them, but as time went on, I forgot their names. And my husband, who was French, and I went back to France from New York for 16 years or so, and we passed through that area, but I didn't want to go, I didn't want to make, I was still, I don't know what the word is. I couldn't make, I had a mental block about, it was in the back of my mind, but I was blocked. And I have a picture, because when I do presentation, I have three poster boards, and I have a picture of the family, and I have a picture of the classroom because I attended the local school in Estanderi. And in those days, a country school like that, it still exists in fact, was run by a couple. The man did the upper grades, and the woman... was run by a couple. The man did the upper grades, and the woman did the lower grades. And so I have a picture of about 30-odd kids. And my cousin also went to the same school. But after my association with the museum, I decided I had to make the effort to have these people... Of course, they're no longer alive, but have to have them recognized by Yehud HaShem in Israel as righteous among nations. But to do that, I had to find them. So living in Fort Myers and going to the center of France, so I asked a friend of mine in France to try and find them. And...